Good evening, everyone. It is 7:05 PM. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting one, Swedair Township Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice are all.
Please remain standing. We're gonna have Pastor Gary Laicop come up.
So I'm the noisy moment of silence here, so let's pray together. Lord, we just thank you for gathering us together this evening. Thank you for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, we're here to celebrate things. We're here to do some business. Lord, I just ask that you will superintend and guide everything that happens. We thank you for K-9 Bane and Officer Gibson. Ask that you'll bless them, bless each of the officers in the police department. Keep them safe and encourage their families, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Everyone can sit. Secretary Savage, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Taki.
Here.
Commissioner Zubek.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Vice President Steele.
Here.
President Ellis.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This board did have an executive session this evening to discuss personnel matters. And now we are up to item six, wearing in of K-9 Bane. We're also gonna have remarks with regard to K-9 Kicks, who is retiring.
He's late to his own party, huh?
Oh my goodness.
K-9 Bane, everybody, and Officer Scott Gibson. Judge, we just have some brief comments, and then we'll get down to your business, if that's okay? All right. Corporal Bloss and I did a bad job of comparing notes before tonight, because we both wrote things to talk about. But I'm gonna get started, and then Corporal Bloss has some remarks as well. K-9 Kicks, who is not with us tonight, because these dogs cannot be in the same room, but K-9 Kicks is retiring tonight, and K-9 Bane is just getting started. K-9 Kicks has faithfully served the Swedair Township Police Department since March 8th of 2018, and he was the first canine purchased by the township when our canine program was reestablished. Due to his age and some health complications, Kicks is now ready to hang up his lead and enjoy retirement. Officer Scott Gibson was assigned as Kicks' handler from the beginning, and the two formed a bond that is evident to anyone who sees them working together. Kicks spent hundreds of hours training with Officer Gibson and many more hours by Officer Gibson's side while they patrolled our community. The pair was often dispatched to help police officers in surrounding jurisdictions as well. Kicks was utilized hundreds of times to track missing and wanted persons, to find pieces of evidence, to take suspects into custody, and to protect his fellow police officers. All the while, Kicks displayed a friendly demeanor and a playful attitude at community service events and around the police station. I'm sure there are many pictures of Kicks and Officer Gibson and the friends that they made hanging on refrigerators all throughout central Pennsylvania. So congratulations to K-9 Kicks, who's resting at home, and welcome aboard K-9 Bane. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Corporal Bloss.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanna thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak real quick, and I'll be quick. I supervise a canine unit, and I'd like to thank a lot of people, and I can only get to so many. I'd first like to thank our prior chief, Darryl Ryder, for bringing the program back. I'd like to thank Superintendent Stauffer for his support and willingness to keep the program going. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for all of your support. You guys might not know it or get to see it all the time, but since the program came back, these dogs have made a difference, both in crime and community relations. They're a very valuable asset. Real quick about Kicks. I've been around dogs my whole life. I don't know if I've ever met a dog with more personality than Kicks. He's something else. Lastly, I just wanna let you know about Kicks' career statistics. That's part of my job, keeping track of all of the times the dogs are used and how they're used. During his career, K-9 Kicks sniffed 140 vehicles for narcotics. None of these stats include training. These are all on-the-street, called-to-an-incident-type-thing. He searched 37 buildings for drugs. He participated in 15 school searches, sniffing lockers for narcotics. He searched 34 buildings looking for suspects hiding. He conducted 22 article searches, looking for evidence. 56 suspect tracks. He had 19 suspects peacefully surrender to him. And he participated in 66 community events, which comes out to a grand total of his career of 389 usages. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I ask you to speak for Bane. How's that? I Bane.
I Bane.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
And I will affirm.
I will affirm.
And support.
And support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of Commonwealth Pennsylvania.
Constitution of Commonwealth Pennsylvania.
And the ordinances of Swedair Township.
And the ordinances of Swedair Township.
And I discharge the duties.
So I would discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As canine handler.
As canine handler.
And canine.
And canine.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Let me say, we're a strong supporter of K-9 Minions. We actually brought in a bunch of authorities from the whole unit tonight.
All right, we are up to item seven, visitors' requests and comments. If you have comments, you can come forward, state your name and address, as well as write them down, and then you may begin.
How old is that dog?
Officer Gibson. How old is Bane right now? What's that? How old is Bane?
Uh, 19 months.
Same age as Bonnie.
Christopher, it's 3800 Brisbane Street. The first-class township code requires that the board is in charge of fire services. Okay? Last month, a board member said they couldn't guarantee fire service. That's unacceptable and dereliction of duty. And you folks have been there 18 months, and you wanna talk about something wrong, and that you can't guarantee fire service? That is something wrong. All I can say is act accordingly. You're responsible for it. First-class township code. Okay? And then, on this agenda, you have a fire company wanting to go use their fire truck as a circus wagon. That's...I've been accused of being stuck in the 80s. Taking fire trucks to someplace two counties away, that's a circus wagon. I don't care if you use the fire truck every weekend, every night for training and/or a public service event, but just keep it in the township. Those fire trucks are bought by the people in township, and they needed to be staying in the township for local events. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time?
Is that gonna keep me out my clothes? Thank you. Joanne Seibert, 799 High Street, in the beautiful village of Bressler. I haven't seen much about the issue of the golf course lately. There apparently was another meeting at 8:00 AM on a Wednesday morning that didn't seem to be advertised. I heard that there were six interested buyers, but haven't been able to get any information on that either. My fear is that the golf course will go the same route as the drug rehab center. People voiced their oppositions to it, and then they let it die down, and then bring it up and pass it quickly, and vote on it before anybody has much recourse. Even though the Friendship Fire Company cannot run fire calls for their community, thanks to the evil actions of the board, they have allowed a youth tag football team to use their field and picnic areas at no charge. They have run CPR classes. They offer smoke detectors to the residents, and they ran a successful annual picnic, and they continue to be there for their residents. There is even a commissioner here who is opposed to the fire company and speaks ill of it at every chance he gets, but still posts on the Bressler Facebook page. Go figure. But it looks like now that they have gotten what they wanted, Bressler is no longer in their crosshairs. So now, they have turned to the last holdout in the township, poor Chambers Hill Fire Company. They cannot use the racist or diversity game book on them, so they have strung them along with ridiculous regulations that no fire company paid or volunteer could meet. Pennsylvania used to be the state with the most volunteer firefighters. I doubt if that's true anymore. The stat is changing. Blame it on society, whose youths are not being taught to volunteer, and they expect to get paid for everything they do. I'm sure some of the parents out there know that, 'cause they probably have to pay their kids to take out the garbage or cut the grass. Finally, I would like to send my heart and prayers out to the firefighters in Idaho, who have lost their lives by an evil sniper. I fear the society we are turning out to be is this type of society. We don't respect the life of the unborn, and now some feel it is okay to abort the lives of anyone living who they want to abort. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time?
Devon Panetto, 7541 Chambers Hill Room. I would like to address the board and make known to the public of the disrespectful and unprofessional behavior I experienced from one of your employees, Zachary Golden, Director of Planning and Zoning. On June 26th, 2025, I spoke with Mr. Golden via phone call. On June 26th, 2025, I spoke with Mr. Golden via phone call regarding three outstanding invoices mailed to me on June 25th for a pole barn project completed in April and allegedly paid in full by March of this year. During this discussion, Mr. Golden was unprofessional, short in his responses, and unable to assist us with any understanding. Therefore, I advised him that I would be coming in to speak with him in person at his office. On June 27th, I, along with my husband and two children, met with Mr. Golden at his office. My only intention during this discussion was to get an explanation as to why I was being billed almost three months after the construction had been completed and occupancy permit issued. After an extremely brief conversation, Mr. Golden immediately became verbally aggressive and tried to redirect the blame on our contractor by making slanderous statements such as being incompetent and that he issued us dirty plans. I then requested proof of the statements, of the documents I supposedly signed approving these build services. However, he could not furnish a single document to my file. Mr. Golden then threatened to revoke my occupancy permit, put a lien on my house and property, and then demanded we leave the building, which we complied with. As we started to exit the room, he then attempted to intimidate us by demanding the clerk call the cops multiple times. And she did with hesitation. My family and I were actively leaving the building, and he continued to belittle me and my husband's character in front of my children. Sergeant Moore and another detective of the Swetera Township Police Department responded to this call and spoke with Mr. Golden first. He then met with my family outside, where he informed us that Mr. Golden admitted he didn't really know what was going on because he inherited this case from Robert Eilin. Sergeant Moore then advised us to attend this meeting to share this information with you and the rest of the community. This interaction was simply to gain clarification and accuracy on billing and has since been rectified. It was revealed that our project account had been mishandled throughout the entire process. Three invoices were lost, found later, and then sent to us after the project was completed. This demonstration of sloppy record-keeping could lead the township to legal issues in the future. Saved in the ordinances, the zoning officer is responsible for keeping such records. It was also stated before in our previous board meeting, how can residents be required to follow the ordinances when the administration cannot? This entire headache could have been avoided in the first place had Mr. Golden considered looking into our file as requested. Due to Mr. Golden's demeanor, it quickly escalated and became aggressive and threatening towards my family and my property. This is not the first time Mr. Golden has inappropriately and unnecessarily contacted the police to remove a tax-paying resident from his presence. As a public servant myself, I'm embarrassed for the township for the way it was represented before a member of its own community. No taxpayer should be spoken to by their own public official whose salary they pay and met with as much disrespect as I was. My hope in sharing this information is that this behavior is immediately addressed and handled accordingly, as no one else should ever be treated in this manner. Lastly, I want to personally thank Commissioner Zubek and Commissioner Taki for taking the time to reach out to me and my husband personally, taking the initiative to investigate our case, and for resolving the matter. This only further proves to me that their best interest is in the residents of this community. This letter serves as my formal complaint against Mr. Golden. Thank you for your time and attention. I also have a copy for each of you.
I do have a question. You said that this is the second time. Could you tell me when the other time was that the police were called?
I don't have dates.
Okay.
Zach, do we have another time with this?
I've never called the police on anyone else, so I'm not sure where that ever came from. That's just hearsay.
Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time?
Mickey Raff, 7736 Chambers Hill Road.
Don't worry about that mic. I think I'm loud enough. Yeah, there was another complaint.
Do you have the date?
What's that?
Or do you have the information for that?
You guys have the information. I'm sure the police have the record.
I'm not aware of it, so that's why I'm asking if it's alleged.
Zach's only been here for a few months, so I don't know of anything.
The gentleman was, is not allowed on the property anymore. And it was the same confrontation, similar confrontation that they had with Zach.
Don't know anything about this.
I sent the email to all you.
Do we have, do we have a date or?
What's that?
I'm hearing something that happened, and I'm hearing in a public meeting from people that don't have actually the background of the information. I think that's something that I should know, so I could investigate and look at it, like, when did it happen?
So you can honestly sit there and say that you personally don't know of another incident that happened with Zach?
I do not.
With the township?
I'm asking you to tell me what it was. Is it a secret or? I mean, to come in and say that, I think it's a very important. I don't know of any incident or any case or any person.
Okay.
I mean, and I'm talking about in the last.
We'll get you the date and the police report.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Right.
As for what was said by Corporal Panetto that was just up here, I was the contractor that I was referred to as incompetent and sloppy. Let me tell you something about my company. My company's been in business for sixty and a half years, and two weeks will be in business sixty-one years. I'm a licensed contractor in the state of Pennsylvania. I can go anywhere in this state and work. My reputation speaks for itself. Google my reviews. Over a hundred and forty-nine five-star reviews with no negative comments. The only repercussions I've ever had in my life as a professional contractor has been from this township, from the way that my situation at my house cost the taxpayers almost eighteen thousand dollars of township money to come after me for something that wasn't justified. The public doesn't know that, but I'm here to tell it now. Then to come after the Panettos on a stormwater system that I've done hundreds of stormwaters. I pulled my emails to Michael Hess with HRG prior to this meeting. There was four emails back and forth between myself and Michael G. There was one initial plan review, a secondary addendum added for an EP plan where he wanted me to put the dirt with the silt sock around it. HRG in the township charged the Panettos a hundred and forty dollars for a phone call, five hundred and ninety-five dollars for four plan reviews. There wasn't four plan reviews and a hundred and forty dollars a phone call? If you think he's worth a hundred and forty dollars a phone call, maybe you should give him the attorney's salary. I think this township is, and the people of this township are totally being screwed over. Talking about the fire company, we'll go to my second issue. I got my tax bill today. I'm probably one of the highest-paying taxpayers in this township for residential property. My house sits three-quarters of a mile from Chambers Hill Fire Company. My house is worth almost two million dollars, and I don't have a fire company within ten minutes. Do you think I want to pay the eight thousand dollar additional tax bill that I got today? As you can see why my house is for sale. I mean, I just think the township has fallen apart. I think from the codes, and you can justify the tax reductions and blah, 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 and shifting in funds of all the other crap that's going on. But for a codes officer to speak to a corporal state trooper and refer to her more or less as a security guard and that she's not a real cop is totally disrespectful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the public, I just want to add, the tax bill that came out today is from the Central Dolphin School District. The Swetera Township tax bill rates have not increased in about twelve years, and it's three point six four mils.
Yeah, but what did the stormwater just go off?
It has never. It's been sixty dollars since it was implemented.
This is the problem. We have all this disinformation, but I will make a suggestion. This is not a stormwater meeting. There is a public stormwater meeting next week, and I was going to reach back out to the family. And I think that you should probably come to that, and we'll have all the people there to talk about stormwater, and that will be at six thirty. That's the second Wednesday, so we would have, you know, you don't have to come, but we would actually have the stormwater engineer.
... meeting either, but you're counting how, you know, you haven't raised the taxes.
You talked about taxes. We're just responding, but we're going to move on. We're going to move on. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments? There's a second time. If you have anything further, you can come up again at the end of the meeting.
My name is Jeff Madison, 988 Blue Jay Road. Two issues, not nearly as critical as the ones that they're discussing here, but feral cat problem. I reached out to Shane a few months ago. We have neighbors that are feeding them. I know they passed the wildlife feeding law in January, I believe, for Pennsylvania. They openly feed these cats. Today went past, there was at least twelve cats in our driveway. They feed them, they come to my yard to leave me gifts all over every day, clean up after my dog every day. My dog has to be licensed. My dog has to have its shots. My dog has to be under my control at all times. And these guys, they, both people that live across the street from each other, they have cats in the house. And I've already gone over to them and said, you know, I mean, you have a dozen cats here. Well, they're not my cats, they're feral cats. So you can't touch them as a person. I can't do anything to those cats. I'll end up in jail. But it's just ridiculous, and it's not everywhere in the town. Well, it is everywhere, I guess, anymore. But there has to be some kind of control. You can't take them to the Humane Society anymore because there's too many. You know, there's kittens everywhere, all the time. And now more and more, there's people that put boxes out on their porch. They put food out on their porch and driveways. They don't, that's all they do. There's no shots, there's no licensing, there's nothing. And we get, you know, to clean up after the messes they leave. We also have wildlife coming into our yards, raccoons, possums. I had to call the township after a possum laid on the street right up from these people's houses. It laid there till it was almost, I couldn't even take care of it. I usually pick it up, get rid of it. I just, I was like, I am not touching it. And they feed these things. They come into our yards, they spread rabies, they're eating out of the bowls with possums, skunks, raccoons that you can see, plus there's coyotes. And it just seems ridiculous that something can't be done. I know there's nothing on books right now, but, I mean, there should be something that can be done about this. If I had ten dogs in my driveway, the cops would be there. They'd be unlicensed, I'd be, you know, before a magistrate someplace, so. As stupid as this sounds, it's a serious problem.
President Owens? Let's let him finish. Because I have something to say too.
And then the other, the other part is, you mentioned codes. We have people in our development that, there, one guy, just call him Fred Sanford. He's got three junk cars in his driveway. He had six or so in his backyard a few years back. They had to remove those. But now he's moved them to the driveway. Every one of them is full of junk. They're between the cars now, full of junk. Down the side of the house, full of junk. There must be twenty snow shovels. And again, it's not a big thing unless you're the guy that lives across the street or the neighbor on either side. And his garage door, one fell off, totally fell apart, you replaced it last year. Now the other one's totally falling apart. And animals in and out. Again, you're dealing with messes. You're dealing with rats, mice, whatever else, and nothing seems to be done. We have a few other ones in the neighborhood now that are using, cutting their trees down and then using the sticks in their yards for, I guess, gardens and things. We have one neighbor is right against Cardinal Drive, or I think it's Cardinal Drive. It looks like an Indian burial ground. Sticks and things tied up in a, I've lived here thirty-one years, and I've never seen it so bad that you have to be ashamed to live across or near somebody. And I know it doesn't go along with some of the other complaints that you've got tonight, and I'll be more prepared later on, but it just seems like they need to get out of the office and really take a ride around and see what's out there because we're paying taxes like they mentioned. And there should be something done about these places to bring it off to a standard. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll let Commissioner Zubek go first, and then I do have a response to it.
My suggestion was just on the cat issue. We do have a contract in Swetera Township where we contract with a rescue in Stilton, I believe.
Stilton Community Cats?
That will take feral cats, I believe.
It's a TNR program, so they will just, it's just trap, neuter, release. I have, I feed, I feed multiple cats too. Like, I have this too. I have four cats inside, I feed seven outside. They're nobody's cats. Two of them just showed up, and I am going to pay money to surrender them as if they were my own to the Humane Society. It is a problem, but I don't know what we at the local level can do to make sure that people are responsible pet owners and not just letting their cats out, and then we have these problems. The other ones, the two that just showed up, they were definitely abandoned. My kids pet them. All the other ones are feral, can't get anywhere near them, and they have no interest. So it's not something that, like, I could bring them in if I wanted to. So I don't know, other than the TNR, which would hopefully reduce the amount of cats over time, but it's obviously going to be a long time, especially if they're being fed. I don't know what else there is, but we can certainly look into it. But at the local level, obviously, that's difficult.
Yeah, I'll turn in, I'll send you addresses in if you need pictures or whatever else.
And same thing for the codes issues. If you could provide the addresses, then we can go ahead and do enforcement.
Yeah, I know some of these have been reported in the past.
I do also want to point out, that was the other point that I was going to. So when we do codes enforcement, if we get to the point of us requesting a fine or trying to find the person, it goes to the MDJs. There are lots of times where the MDJs either continue, throw out things. So if you have an issue with people not actually being held accountable, then you need to advocate to your MDJ as well because we can, we can fine, we can cite, we can do all that. If the person that is the judge says you don't have to pay it, we're back to the same thing, and, you know, our hands are tied. So just keep that in mind as well. It is an elected position. Reach out to them.
And then I'd say one thing about the trap, neuter, and release. It's as far, it's a big joke. I mean, literally.
It's a band-aid.
It's a joke. Well, it may be a mandate, but.
No, it's a band-aid, not a mandate.
A band-aid, yeah.
Band-aid, yeah.
It's a kind of a band-aid on a big problem.
Jeff, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but our conversation, you basically knew all that already. I would take it that you're here to lobby for some type of ordinance? Because everything that was just said through the board here, you knew from our conversation and talking with Zach, that there's really no ordinance or any.
Right, I think that's what needs to be done because, like anything else, I've been in my house thirty-one years, and I'm starting to be ashamed of the neighborhood I live in. And I keep my grass cut, I clean up after my pet, my pets over the years. Do everything I'm supposed to do, but it just seems like, you know, nobody really gets out there and cares. And that's what's going to make people leave the neighborhoods. So, and if you take a drive around the neighborhoods now compared to thirty years ago, huge change.
And I did not miss, did you put anything about the junkyard? I don't think I've seen that.
No.
Okay.
I'll send you some pictures.
And that was me and Commissioner Colling. Remember when I told you we rode by?
Yeah, I was going to say, we went to your house, and we saw evidence of neighbors feeding.
Right.
Because, like you said, there were bowls or even tins outside. But at the time we went, as luck would have it, there was, like, we actually looked around to see where they were becoming from, you know, calling us back into the street. Like, they got to go somewhere during the day, and then they probably show up for the feedings.
Oh, they're, they're, the one lady, I mean, they're everywhere in her yard.
Well, that's, we saw the pictures they sent, and then we were matching up by angle.
We have every type of gray cat there is available.
Thanks for coming out, Jeff.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time?
I don't know if it's a comment. My name is Martin Harris, 6210 Manor Hill Circle. Kind of like a question. I'd be kind of encouraged to get a sponsorship for my wife's nonprofit. It's called Casa de Harmony, and it's for advocacy for children and for special needs and, you know, that transition from child to adult, and also specializing in dealing with children that have come here and their parents are went through the immigration process. And there's a tricky period between, you know, eighteen, twenty-two, and where a child with special needs, if they do not get their citizenship before eighteen, they have to take a test, but they don't have the ability to actually take a test. And there's a period, like, I think it's twenty-two, they have to be certified as I think a certain level of ability to function. And if they don't get that assessment before then, then they're not eligible for waivers. So what we found going through this whole process is the information is not there in any of the schools as far as how to deal with this. And a lot of the parents are caught off guard. So she started this, I think, last year, just talking to parents like us. But we were kind of encouraged to go further and, you know, see if we can get into multiple schools and help the parents and the children get their benefits. see if we can get into multiple schools and help the parents and the, the children get their benefits and everything else. Because, um, and I, I'm sorry to, just trying to give a little background.
They're fine.
Um, like our son, um, we, we, we haven't got him on insurance, no benefits or anything. So everything's been out of pocket because, um, you know, red tape. Uh, they, they can't tell if he's a citizen or not. Um, they, you know, they say he didn't, doesn't work enough. And then they say he worked, he shouldn't, he works too much, but he doesn't work at all because he can't even talk. Um, and these are just some of the things that just happen to everybody. Um, and nobody really says anything about it. And nobody knows how to deal with it. And, um, I know in Cumberland County, they have a, I think it's called the ARC, um, in Cumberland County, and they do great, uh, with their events and giving knowledge to people. And that's where we got a lot of our information, how to deal with the lawyers and, you know, make sure we got the planetary guardianship. Cause nobody told us. And I don't think anybody's telling any of the other people, other parents as well. You need to get your planetary guardianship before they turn 18. Otherwise, the children can say no, can say no to the doctor, can say no, I don't want to live here anymore, can say no to school. And what we believe is happening is that once you have children that can say no, that means that some of them will end up in jail, some will end up homeless. Um, it, it becomes a nightmare, but you have to get this all done between this 18 and 22. And it's not being done. And so that's our primary focus.
Can I just, I, I think what you're, you're saying is, uh, you, you and your wife would, would be interested in getting some type of support, funding to have a program that is not specific to your family, but would help other people?
Would, would help other people.
Okay, so just, just to keep going with that, um, we're in the period now where, I mean, these are more, um, the way you look, government goes, it's more county issue, but are you coming to us because you want a letter of support?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, um, having, having said that, Commissioner Tuckey is the Chair of Grants. Okay. We kind of did it in a, you know, everybody cooperated last year. But I think by next week's meeting, um, we'll have to put out some type of guidelines because the, the county just started that cycle now, if it's a gaming grant. Um, I don't know if it's, if that's specific, but I think by next week, is this fair to say, Commissioner Tuckey can stop any time, that we could come up with, um, a criteria, we put something out and we give people to like the first August meeting like we, we did last year?
Yeah, I'll see why not.
That's what, okay, so, um, and, and then, uh, if you, if you can put your phone number up there and, um, you know, the interesting thing is, um, how long I've known you. You resemble your father speaking.
You do.
The mannerisms, but, uh, I, I think you, you, you know, you're, you're just maybe one meeting too soon. Next week we'd make the announcement, you don't have to come to the meeting. Um, but I'd say starting next week, we'll probably pick a date, um, we'll agree on it. And then we would have the criteria of what we were going to support. Cause you have to remember, it's not our money. Like, we, we, we would, um, you know, sponsor certain things and then they don't get any money. Um, but then that way you, you'd be able to fill out, um, you know, more information without standing there talking about it. And then we would then review and then we either do a support letter. Um, the, the county made some changes and they have different people on the board. So I think there's more of an effort, um, for public safety this time. But I mean, the, the type of program you're talking about is one that, um, similar things get, get the funding and get support letters. Um, I think we just can't really, like, we appreciate you giving the, the information and, and that you're passionate about something that, that helps other people. Um, but we, we need to set our criteria of whether, um, this year we're focusing on, um, and, and, and you can still, still request it. But you're, you're just, you're really like one meeting.
I didn't know yet.
No, no, and it's, the county started July 1st.
It's usually the opposite. We get requests at the last minute, so we appreciate.
But it, you didn't leave your phone number?
Oh.
But I mean, it's, it's commendable that you, you know, you, you want to do that. Um, and, you know, if there, if there's a way that, that we can help. And, and if it's not, um, that program, uh, there's lots of social services, obviously. Uh, and.
Yeah, that's the thing, you know, I, I know there are, but it's so disjunctive. You, you actually need, um, a, a junction box, which we're trying to.
No, I'm not saying instead of yours, but there's social services that get funded.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean? Like that, and I'm not, I'm not saying that somebody else is going to do what you're doing, but there's a lot, there's lots of social services in those grant, um, awards from, from different pots of money, so.
Yeah, I, I think we were kind of looking for like, you know, the, the basics for, you know, office to have people come in, you know, like after hours that we can.
Have you, have you already set up your nonprofit?
It was set up last year.
What's the name of it?
Casa de Harmony. And, um, it was, it was set up to see if we could do events, you know, just like, like at a hotel, just, just to give people information and, and have some speakers come in. Um, maybe get a, a couple of lawyers that, you know, have gone through this process and say, okay, you need to do this. Set up the bank accounts, PAA, all, all this stuff. Because again, you know, I, I think we have ARC in Dauphin, but.
There was, I'm not, I knew someone that was in it when I was younger, but I don't, I don't know how it works at this point now. Um, but there, there, there was at one point.
There's Central PA, ARC at Central PA.
Yeah, but I mean.
But there actually was a Dauphin County.
Yeah, like, I, I, like I said, the, the one in Cumberland County that, um, Horstwood Perry County, you know, um, we went to a couple of their events and it's great, you know? Very good information on a lot of things, but it's not, it's not here. And it's not in certain languages, um, which is really needed.
And as a move forward, you'll be able to tailor your, your goals and what you want to do.
Yeah.
In, in, into the application process, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tuckey wanted to speak.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, uh, with the ARC, I don't know if it's still located there, but off of Long Street.
Yeah, that's.
Is where there's a facility there.
I, yeah, I, I, I passed it all, you know?
Yeah.
Cause, but, um, like I said, it's not active in the community. It's not something anybody taught, like when we were talking to parents, nobody's getting any information from them. So, uh, you know, it's not there.
And did you happen to talk to any reps from the state or the county, Dauphin County?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I, I talked to the county commissioners and, uh, cause we had a, a bigger issue where, with our, our child with the school district with Central Dauphin, uh, which just, it looks like this is getting rectified, uh, right now. Man, but it was, um, it, that was problematic because, um, again, we didn't know that his EIP benefits actually follow him. We thought it was with the school and we were trying to get him into a private school and pay out of pocket. And we were told no, that we couldn't move him. Um, so, and we only had, it, it got to the point where we were like, okay, we'll try to homeschool him. So it was just, um, and, and we were told, um, later after we kind of brought it up to the commissioners, like, no, you know, it's BIP follows, follows the child and, um, there's other, you know, things that can be done. And, and so that was working out, but that's just, again, it's about information. We just, the information is not there and the information is knowledge. And, you know, it's not like, you know, we're dumb people, it's just, you know?
You don't know.
Well, we're asking questions, we're talking to top people, can we do this? Like, no, but we actually could, so. And it's more like they wanted the money for, you know, cause I think it's like $22,000 or $25,000 per people with special needs or something like that. And they just wanted that money until you hit 22. And, you know, cause I talked to the person, he said, well, we usually don't get you started on any type of benefits until 22. But knowing what we know, you don't get any benefits if they're not actually assessed prior to that. So imagine how many people after 22, their child's really not getting any benefits and they're stuck. Right? And it's, yeah. And that's, that's happening a lot, it has to be happening a lot. But I, I appreciate, thank you, I mean, you answered everything, if I can.
Yeah, uh, thank you for coming out tonight and we will reach out.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time? All right. Hearing none, we're going to go on to item eight, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're up to item nine, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion at this time?
Um, I just have a question.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, Mr. Freeze was up here with concerns about this event that the equipment's going to. Um, just for the public's knowledge, what's being considered since we're down to currently right now with two active fire stations? Just so they're aware.
As far as staffing goes?
Yeah.
Uh, we communicate between all the stations and if there is no staffing for the township, they will not go. So I, I get, I understand Mr. Freeze's concerns, but there's also the aspect of, um, you know, our firefighters, they do a lot all the time. They get up in the middle of the night. I mean, we've run, we're running what? A thousand plus calls a year. And it's a time for them to get away, to socialize and relax with fellow firefighters. It's good for them, it's good for their mental health. So, um, I appreciate the concern, but I urge the board to please allow that to continue. Um, because it is a, it is a big deal for, for our firefighters.
Good. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying volunteers shouldn't be able to go out and participate in things. I, after listening to Mr. Freeze's concerns though, I just want to make sure, after the comment was made by Commissioner Still the other week, or the other meeting, that for the resident satisfaction that we definitely have enough coverage while there wouldn't be in the township.
Yeah. We have a much better grasp now on when we do and do not have coverage in this township. Um, due to our scheduling platform. So it's very easy to tell if people will be around on the weekend. And I can assure you, they will not go if we do not have a crew back here.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to make sure. Go ahead.
I do have one question. Did you have the scheduling platform last month?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I, I just want to make sure that, um, my comments aren't missed or misconstrued. Um, the volunteer fire service in Swatara Township, all Dauphin County in Pennsylvania, um, has been on a decline for years. So this, this is nothing new. And my, my comments was a systemic problem relating just to, uh, the whole county, the whole state. But I wanted to bring it more to a specific local level where we knew about this 30 years ago. So this is nothing new for us. And we have a responsibility to the public to provide fire protection. Now, uh, this newly elected majority board in January of 2024, uh, decided that the next step for us was to support the volunteers with, uh, part-time firefighters. So that is the step and the direction to fix the non-service calls, uh, that we do have and the failures. Um, and I think we're heading in the right direction. We, we, we increased our, uh, incentive program for our volunteers to bring in more volunteers. Uh, and we did that two years in a row in the budget. And, um, added the, the volunteers on top of that. And mind you, with no tax increase because it, it, it was sustainable. Um, I think the dialogue in public, uh, that I had was honest. And, uh, I hopefully those words will not be misconstrued because we've been known about this problem for 30 plus years. This is nothing new and this board's majority decided to take action to try to fix this problem. But it's nothing that you're going to fix overnight. It's going to take time, it's going to take planning. And I will give the Swatara Fire and Rescue Service Board, since its inception, and Chief Iberson, that planning process has been going on for the last 12 years. Um, that's, that, and the inception of the, the Fire Service Board, I want to say is around seven years. So we're headed in the right direction and we're going to fix the problem. It's just going to be in time, but this is nothing new.
Just, just a point of clarification, um, President. Um, that hiring of part-time, part-time firefighters process started with the budget in 2023. And I have the minutes and everything to show that. And there's been some misinformation put out in the public that Commissioner Tuckey and I, sitting on the board in 2023, had nothing to do with the, um, part-time firefighters program and that is simply incorrect. And so I want to correct the record. Anybody can give me a call if they want information on that, but I can show you the 2023 budget. I can show emails from myself and Chief Iberson, back and forth, talking about what the process for the program is. And it was also a presentation, um, in that year, uh, in our hearings, our budget hearings, that also, um, are a reflection of the steps that were taken in 2023. So, um, I appreciate just being allowed to clarify that, thank you.
Um, I think what you're referring to as far as the misinformation is that you and Commissioner Tuckey voted no to the hiring.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking you to guess what misinformation, I'm just telling you.
That's what happened.
Well, no, no, I don't need a narrative and.
That is what happened, that's a fact.
Where did that come from?
It's a fact, it happened in one of these meetings, it's in a, it's in a minute.
It doesn't matter if I voted against a revised budget in 2024.
No, you voted against the hiring.
Police services. And we're not getting into the politics tonight.
I'm, I'm correcting the record as well too, that's.
I am perfectly within my right to correct the statement.
Hiring the part-time firefighter.
I would like to correct my statement and I don't need you to add all of the context you want. I simply stated that it was misinformation when you say that part-time firefighters program started in 2024, when you got on the board, when I have minutes that show that maybe, you know, the concept was discussed in prior times. I don't really care. I do care about the facts and the facts was it didn't start in 2024 because it was budgeted in 2023.
It was budgeted in 2020 as well.
Okay, doesn't matter.
So it started a long time ago and the hiring took place in last year or this year.
Okay, well, he didn't say that either. So I'm just correcting the facts, thank you.
Yeah, so am I. Um, but what I did want to say as well for discussion is that this is not a new request. This is something that's happened for many years. Um, so obviously we're not going to intentionally leave the fire services without volunteers. Um, and as, with regard to the guaranteed fire services, that's been a thing the entire time this township has, has existed. I'm, we're not, if you want to speak again, you can come up. Um, I, this is our time to conduct the meeting. But we had an instance, I want to say it was 2022, where there was a fire on Harrisburg, a vehicle crash, fire on Harrisburg Street and there were no responders. So it's, it's not a new thing, it's been going on for years. It's an unfortunate reality and we're going to do everything that we can to make sure that there is a guaranteed response. So if you're going to say it's neglect, you can say it about 2022 and all of the years that the township has existed because it's always been a volunteer. The only way you can have guaranteed fire response is if you have fully paid staff. And we don't have that and we can't afford that. So we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we do have responses. Um, but unfortunately that's, that's the reality of the situation of the volunteer fire services. There are going to be times or potentially times where people are not available. So I, I just want to clarify that as well.
I hope, I love, I love how anytime there's, someone brings up an issue or it always started in 2022 and 2023.
No, that's just the one that I'm aware of. Cause a civilian actually saved the person.
When your dad went out and borrowed $20 million for a new fire. It never, none of our financial issues, nothing ever happened prior to 2022.
The budget for part-time firefighters started in 2020? I just said that.
It's just, you turn around now.
Um, let Commissioner Tuckey go and then you can go.
Yeah, I'm not trying to have all this back and forth.
I'm not going to either.
I just asked a question because of the comment that was made not that long ago, if we'd be okay in the township because they're taking a few pieces of equipment from the township. I'm not saying the volunteers shouldn't be able to go, take some relief, go do some other things. I just was curious, are we okay if something would happen? We do have coverage. That was all I was asking.
Your question is valid, that's, that's an important question to ask.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
A couple of things real quick. I'm, I'm happy that we all agree that paid fire moving forward is, is, is the way to go, so.
I didn't say paid fire. And I don't know what your plan is. So if you kindly tell us what the plan is, I'll tell you if I agree or not.
You just said you agreed, okay.
So if you kindly tell us what your whole plan is, I'll tell you if I agree.
Specific to A on the agenda. Um, this Schuylkill County Fireman's Convention is something that we've partnered with for years. And then they come here and then they provided us with items that, that Rutherford has used at their open house. So, um, there's certainly a, a connection between the fire companies. And, um, you know, my, my position is township first. So, uh, Chief Iberson knows that if we need, um, somebody here, we've, we've, we've denied requests and we, we've switched schedules in the past. Um, it's basically just on the consent agenda like it is most years. Um, and tonight, uh, you know, it got a little bit more clarification. And, and there's nothing wrong with any of this being concerned that if our fire company goes to a, a parade or something in another community, is our community at risk? And the, the, what we're looking at to make sure that it's not. But at the same time, those other people come here and have the same concerns. And, and it's, it's very common, um, for volunteer fire companies and even paid fire companies to cross boundaries for, um, events. And, um, like several people in this room, there's a huge event every year for the National Fallen Firefighters and you will see apparatus there from all over the United States of America. I think that's an incredible event, it's very touching, it's moving. But this is a parade and we're, and we're letting a fire truck go. And then they'll come here for something good and we'll go there and, and I love that people can do that. Um, but it, it's just, it's really not, um, that uncommon. And I don't think there's anything wrong with a citizen asking if, if we have, um, coverage. And I don't think there's anything wrong if, uh, Chief Iberson at some point says they can't go even if we approve it on the consent agenda tonight. So I, I just wanted to address that specific, um, nine A. That's all I have.
And just to clarify, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with anyone up here asking any questions on that either. I mean, I think Commissioner Tuckey was just looking for clarification on if we had a plan for coverage and clearly we do, so thank you.
Do we have anything further? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Moving on. Item ten, consideration of minutes.
Motion ten A and ten B. Second.
So the commissioners had the minutes for June fourth and June eleventh, uh, in their packet and had the opportunity to review them. Do we have any discussion with regard to the minutes? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're up to item eleven, building and codes plans, and we'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Golden.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
If I may, I'll make a motion before we get into discussion.
Sure.
Uh, motion for eleven A, B, C, and D, uh, to approve those financial security releases as long as they have met all township requirements.
Second.
All right, and then by way of discussion, um, we'll let Mr. Golden give an overview.
Sure, so the finance director and myself and the manager of utilities are continuing to close out old lingering accounts. So these are four of the fi- almost final accounts that we're getting ready to close. Uh, fifty-five ninety Dairy Street. This was for a building addition that never occurred. Um, they put a eleven thousand dollar finance security to do the stormwater facilities. They will be coming back at a later date and posting new finance security. The best thing to do would be to release this and do a new one. The second one, third one, and the fourth one are all single-family dwellings, stormwater, uh, financial security.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have any discussion or questions at this time? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those are all approved. We're up to item twelve, authorization to establish and advertise a fire coordination position. I'll entertain a motion.
Make that a motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Connolly, are you prepared to give, uh, an overview or?
Um, I'll, I'll start now, I'll turn it over to Chief Iberson. Um, this, this position has been, um, talked about, uh, described and, um, basically built to, um, the specifications of, of what the township was looking for, uh, in, in, um, having a, uh, assistant role. Um, one, one of the big things is recruitment, retention, and, um, then all, all things fire. When I got back on the Fire Service Board in January of twenty-four, it was actually on a list of, um, twelve discussion points from the Fire Service Board from the previous, uh, two-year cycle. And, um, we've been working through this, this twenty-four, twenty-five. It came before the Fire Service Board at the last meeting. Um, there was discussion, um, conversation and, and unanimous, uh, support, um, to move it to this board. And, um, I think that's pretty much all, all I have, I have to, to say about it. But it's, uh, it's something that we would, uh, i- if, if we vote in the affirmative tonight, it's something that we would then, um, start the process of, uh, put it, putting out, um, the application period. Uh, and then I, I think we had talked about, um, you know, maybe coming back in, uh, August and interviews and things like that. I don't know off the top of my head when the next Fire Service Board meeting is. But I think at this point, it's run its course there over, um, a couple different, um, cycles. So, um, Chief Iberson, is there anything that you want to add to what I said?
I don't know what was in the packets. But, uh, do you have the part what's broken down into three different positions? Or three different areas? Yeah, okay. So a- as you saw in your packets, um, it's kind of a three, three different positions into one. Um, and this came from a, um, there was a group of citizens that was appointed by the Fire Advisory Board to look at the fire service, um, in all different aspects, which included interviewing firefighters, interviewing outside agencies, outside chiefs, uh, elected officials. Um, and this is one thing that came up in multiple, uh, discussions that they had. Um, and the, the primary thing was the volunteer fire coordinator. Um, so the three portions that would be broken up into is they would assist with, uh, recruiting, um, and retaining, which, uh, you know, managing, uh, leads coming in, following up on leads, um, and things like that with the volunteers. Uh, and then the other part of it, uh, would be a fire safety inspection portion, um, to help out with, uh, on the codes enforcement side, the basic fire inspections for our high-risk buildings, um, which would be our hotels and some of our areas where lots of people gather. Uh, that will help lower our ISO score. Um, that's something that we can really get a lot of points with ISO for, uh, insurance companies. And, and when I say that, I'm, I'm talking things like checking exit signs, making sure exits are blocked, there's not. Uh, we have a big problem right now, we're noticing when we go into businesses, illegal locks on doors, um, that have been known to kill firemen, uh, if they go in there. Um, so dealing with things like that, um, would be a huge help, um, to, to everybody. And then the third portion would be, um, pretty much a, like an administrative assistant for fire, um, to help out with, you know, managing documents, scanning documents and keeping files up to date.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and open it up for a discussion or questions at this time.
Yeah, I have some questions. I gotta tell you. I was actually shocked when I saw this on the agenda. Because in twenty twenty-five, and, and this is in personnel related because I took this information right out of our budget. Between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, our chief got a th- nearly thirty thousand dollar pay raise. In the meantime, we lost two stations. We, there was complaints from two thousand eighteen till two thou- till recently, um, that resulted in a closure of stations that due to discrimination issues and that obviously were not resolved during that time. Um, if that's the case, you know, it was, you know, suggested allegations, whatever you want to call them, that I've yet to see any actual, other than the first time, I, I did see something that alluded to that. But this last time, it was pretty much, someone's doing this investigation, there's going to be a report. There's no report still to this day. And that station remains closed and all those firefighters have moved on and so, and most of them are not running in our township anymore. So, I mean, all I've seen is decline. All I've seen is running people off. And, you know, I'm not saying that there hasn't been, like Commissioner Steele stated, you know, we've had a gradual decline in our volunteers and, and things like that. That's been a normal, you know, progression, but it's been fast-tracked by a lot of the poor leadership and poor management. And so I, I'm just not understanding how you can have less responsibility and get a thirty thousand dollar pay raise. I thought that was to pay for the additional responsibilities that he was taking on. And now he's saying that, like, in that inspections. Inspections were part of the original job description that were supposed to be done for the last eight or nine years. There are so many things that are just wrong about this township. We don't even have a township manager and we're prioritizing an assistant when we just, last month, brought new, four new officers on that can be splitting the duties if there's things that need to be done. That are technically part-time. And we just hired part-time firefighters. So I can't for the life of me figure out why we're spent, we're, we're increasing the red tape, we're increasing bureaucracy and spending nearly fifty-two thousand dollars on a, an assistant. I, I actually think I'd be fine if we just took some of that pay raise away because it wasn't worth it. It's not, it's not right, the decisions are being made. This is not, you know, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Why did we promote four officers? Eleven thousand, between eleven and fifteen thousand dollars is what our leadership is making. How many, how many, how many officers do we have under you?
There's three assistant chiefs, three battalion chiefs,
Okay.
two captains and two lieutenants.
Okay, how many vehicles among them?
Six, six or seven?
Okay, okay.
I have it in front of me, so.
Plenty of vehicles to do some inspections and, you know, it, it's just, you know what? We shouldn't be hiring someone to do your job. And, and it really is sad that we don't have, for a year and a half, we've been man- we've been operating, not even following our township ordinance, breaking the law essentially. We're supposed to have a township manager. And the priority of this board is to hire an assistant for the chief who has a job to do and can delegate.
I'm one person.
God, I'd like to just find, we have one, one paid, full-time firefighter.
That was used, and I can bring up, uh, this is my time. The argument that was used. No, I wasn't done. The argument that was used when the pay raise was being discussed, the budget, the bu- the revised budget that increased the salary by thirty thou- nearly thirty thousand dollars, it went from eighty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars to a hundred and fifteen thousand.
I mean, it's public knowledge, but you're disclosing personnel information.
It's public knowledge, everybody needs to know what's going in our fire, fu- 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 fire service. Everybody should know how many vehicles are running around. Everybody should know who's driving those vehicles. Everybody should know the mileage, the fuel. The people in this township have a right to know what you're doing with their tax dollars. And to sit up here and try to tell me that this isn't ma- that we're not, I shouldn't put it out there? I'm sorry. If you think you need help and you want us to go down your list, then it, it's going to be put out there. People deserve to know.
Okay.
Are you going to talk about anybody else's salary?
And if anybody wants to know any of the salaries for the administration, you're more than welcome. Go to the township website, go on and look at the budgets and it's there. So I'm not telling anybody anything that the people shouldn't already know.
And, and this is, this is all great information, but I'm going to take my time now. The, the job position.
You interrupted me, so take your time.
Position came up while you sat as the commissioner on the Fire Service Board with citizens that you appointed.
Absolutely not. You're lying, you're misrepresenting that report from that, that committee on the fire.
The committee that you appointed said we should do this and you were for it.
I'm going to ask that you stop speaking and allow someone else to speak, you will get another turn. If you can't do that, and this goes for everyone, then I'm going to have to turn off the mic so that everyone gets an opportunity to speak. We're not speaking over each other. This is the last time, I will say it one more time, if you could please refrain from interrupting. Otherwise, we will turn off the microphones and one person will speak at a time, we'll do it like it's kids. I don't need to, I need you to stop so that you already had your turn. Another commissioner is going to speak. I'm sure everyone else will have something to say. You can speak again, please be respectful.
Tell the truth about the committee.
Please be respectful.
Ask him about the committee.
Brendan, could you please turn off the microphones? We'll, we'll do it as we need to.
So you picked the citizens who did the work, who came up with the idea, who then, I took the position you were in and the twelve items you had, and I didn't reject any of them, and we worked for an additional eighteen months.
Where's the report posted?
Have some decorum. You can talk again, you can talk again, stop talking now.
The, the meetings are public. Have you attended a Fire Service Board meeting in the last year and a half? You have it in here.
Where is the report?
This is it. So, so, so it is in her hand, what she's asking for is in her hand. Okay, so, so you're, you're mixing things up. We appointed volunteer firefighters to officer positions, okay? They're volunteers. They're, they're volunteer firefighters, they're, they're not paid. So taking them to do administrative work is just, you know, you're, you're totally off base, doesn't happen anywhere. And it's an assistant position, we now have paid firefighters. You just said that you were for that and you orchestrated it during the years that you were here. They put out fires, they're here to protect the citizens. There is one paid firefighter. And at this point, I was going to give you credit for having a, a good idea to, to move this forward. I, I cannot say this was my idea. This was, that you appointed. You appoint, I did not appoint a citizen. You were. You were. You were. You did. Okay, so, so they, they did good work, they came up with this. I went to the Fire Service Board meetings, it was recommended by the people that are out there that are doing the work. The, the chief had his input. And now we've moved along to a vote. And now tonight, you're against what you were for. You're, you're questioning what your committee came up with. You're, you're questioning.
After I left.
No, no, no. Okay, so what I'm saying is, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm a liar, telling the truth here, everybody's, okay. All right, so, anyway, the, the position was crafted over a period of time, I was going to say, with multiple boards over many years, it was headed this direction for, for quite a while. And now we have paid firefighters, we're getting closer to what Mr. Freeze want, a guaranteed response. Response times are lower, we heard from a citizen tonight that it takes ten minutes to get to his house. Um, we hear every week what our response times are, they're, they're below the national average. We're doing great in fire service, going from complete volunteer to a combination department. We have incredible volunteers and then we have some good part-timers. This was an administrative sti- position to make sure this functioned fine, I thought it was, was, was put together well. I had absolutely nothing to do with this, I just was appointed to the Fire Service Board by the president of this board for this two-year cycle. You had it two years before me. So again, I'm going to say, I think you did a great job coming up with the idea and working and advancing it. And now I think all of us are ready to move forward and that's all I have to say.
You're next.
I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Nothing? All right.
Okay, so.
Hold on, let him get your mic on before you start.
Oh, they're all off now?
No, you're on.
One at a time, since we can't behave like adults.
I, I, look.
No, I'm not talking about you, I'm not talking about you at all.
Okay, um, Chief Iberson, you said you have three assistants. I didn't write it down fast enough, you have three assistants, chiefs.
Three battalion chiefs.
Okay.
Two captains. And two lieutenants.
Do all of them have vehicles?
No. No.
So out of, who does have vehicles?
The three assistant chiefs.
Okay.
Two battalion chiefs. And the EMA coordinator have vehicles assigned to them.
I'm sorry, I can't remember the number of people that were just promoted. Was that three or four last month?
You promoted one assistant chief. And a battalion chief.
Okay, so one assistant, one captain.
A battalion chief.
Okay.
And two lieutenants.
Well, I just couldn't remember the exact number. A lot of what's going on here, I mean, that's a fair amount of people. What's their responsibilities?
I'll give you job descriptions. You should have had them. They're all different.
Okay. I have concerns, and this is my concerns. 52,000 a year to have another person on, along with benefits. The amount of money that's gonna be needed for this township for equipment, for fire engines and whatever we need, I mean, we were already told that's massive amounts that's needed. It used to be on average how much for a fire engine, and that's doubled almost. And we've gotta be smarter with how we spend resources that we have. And I, I just think, a lot of the positions that are getting put on is something that we could do with, deal with more in-house with what's being asked, especially unfortunately with being down to almost two firehouses now that are active. Instead, at one point, we had, well, years ago, we had more, but five, and it just keeps dwindling. I think we need to be smarter with what we're doing in our time. And I know someone's gonna take that out of context, say, I'm not for volunteers or this, and I, I know myself and Commissioner Zubac, we're totally for the volunteer system. We have concerns for our township, our residents, not that other people up here don't, but we have to conserve more of our resources that we have to work with. It's either that or over time, the residents are gonna get gouged with increases. And I think this could be handled more in-house with who we have on staff right now. Thank you.
Brendan.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm good.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. The only thing that I wanna say is that Chief Iverson does a great job. He has the designation of chief fire officer, which, what I was, I'm looking on my phone, I was trying to look up how many we have in the state. That's, that's a prestigious designation for someone that's in fire services. So, my phone doesn't work down here very well. Google chief fire officer, learn something about it. But I appreciate what Chief Iverson does, as well as all of the volunteers. That's all I have. Do we have anything else from anyone? Commissioner Zubac?
Yes, the point I was making is, we don't need another position, an assistant position. Plain and simple. It's not to knock anybody else in the fire service, anybody in the fire service, although I do feel that things could be handled differently. I will end by saying that that committee that was mentioned, I was not there for the remainder of that committee. And there's one gentleman in the audience that knows that, knows the truth. And a report was never put out. They were supposed to put a report out. I never saw the report. So to sit up there and try to pull the wool over people's eyes and say that I'm like senile and I remember, and I knew something that I didn't know, I mean, come on, that might work with other people, but it doesn't work with me. I think I could remember what I've seen and what I didn't see. So, it's very disrespectful. And it's very disrespectful to scream over me, and it's disrespectful to interrupt me. And I actually think the gavel is more respectful. Thank you.
I just, again, I am gonna respond. Please keep that same energy when someone else is talking. I agree, it's very disrespectful, and we're all guilty of it. But everyone is responsible for their own conduct. Let's, let's try to do better. So, does anyone have anything further? All right, Secretary Yousavich, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Taki?
No.
Commissioner Zubac?
No.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele?
Yes.
President Ellis?
Yes. We're on to item 13, approval of Hondro and a 9/11 rapid response vehicle quotes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Did you wanna give information for the public for this as well? Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, I believe we're, the replacement of the vehicles are 18. Normally we have a five-year cycle, we stretched it out as far as, as we could.
Ones of 15.
Yeah, so 18 and 15, and again, we're into 10 and seven, seven years, so, I think we did everything we could to keep those vehicles up and running and serving the public. And we're looking to replace and repurpose if we can. And I just wanna add, very similar to what we do with the police department on a shorter timeline, police cars do not run for seven and 10 years. So it's basically, as we say when we do this for the budget, it's time when you do vehicle replacement.
And for the public, one vehicle is $59,540 and the other is $45,230. Does anyone have any questions or discussions at this time?
Yeah, I would, I would actually like to request, for my own edification, a list of all vehicles that we've purchased over the last two years, as well as who they're assigned to and what year they are.
I'd like to add to that for me, please. I'd like to know the mileage because of tracking to see where we're at with lifespan of the vehicles that we have.
All right, anyone have anything else?
I saved my comments to talk about, actually, both, both positions until now. I was on the Swat Air Fire and Rescue Board. I did serve it as its chairman at one point. There has been a lot of discussion, and Chief Iverson, what is the plan, when, what was the company that came in and put the study together 10 years ago? That's what I'm absent of. The study, VFIS study.
VFIS?
Yeah, that's what it was, the VFIS study. So the VFIS came in, it might have been 15 years ago, right? Let's just say, I know it was more than 10.
No, it was just probably 2015, 16.
15, so we'll say 10 years. And VF, this township paid over $50,000 for experts to come in and conduct a study of its fire service. And, and some of the things that were requested in that study or some of the recommendations that they gave, were committees that were set up. One was the Swat Air Fire Rescue Board. The Swat Air Fire and Rescue Board comprised of each station's chief and then two citizens at large, and each fire department had the opportunity to appoint someone to the Swat Air Fire Rescue Board. And out of that Swat Air Fire and Rescue Board, because you had the personnel from the fire stations and then two citizens at large, they were tasked with making recommendations to the Swat Air Township Board of Commissioners. And what you have seen over the past 10 years is those recommendations come, coming to fruition. This is nothing new under the sun. We had a 10-year plan, we're executing that 10-year plan, and believe it or not, next year, because of COVID, we had to hold off on some things because of COVID, next year, we will complete almost, I'd say 95% of everything in that study. And following that study, because we utilized taxpayers' dollars for that. Tonight you had heard about the fire fund. So the fire fund is separate from the general fund. When you look at your tax bill, you are specifically taxed for the fire fund. The fire fund, before it was reduced in this year's budget, was right around about $1.5 million. The fire fund is destined to spend, or budget, excuse me, 1.3. If we look at our spending currently right now, we're destined to spend under a million. So, you know, to come out here and say that the fire fund's money is being wasted, that's just, that's just not true. Because there are some that are, actually have their finger on the pulse, and I mean actually connected to understanding the finances of this township. Because we were in a bad financial position, but not in the fire fund. The fire fund was not in a bad financial position, it was a general fund. I'll add to that, when you look at the vehicle replacement program, I gotta give this chief here, the career chief that we hired, I think 12 years ago, kudos. Because one of the first things that he did was, he started an apparatus replacement plan. That is something that you do as a fire chief. And when you hear that we have all these vehicles or too much apparatus, last year it was, we reduced apparatus, so we reduced costs, we reduced overhead, and we were shunned for that. And this is just part of the replacement program, and we have less vehicles this year than what we had last year. And when you look at mileage on a vehicle, whether it be a police vehicle, whether it be a fire vehicle, whether it be a highway truck, you don't only look at the miles, you look at the engine hours, because the engine hours outpace the miles. So you might have 50, you might have 50,000 miles on a vehicle, but the engine hours, when you compare that to how many engine hours are on that vehicle, that vehicle has technically 200,000 miles on it. It has to be replaced, right? And I'm gonna leave you with this, because I was on a call today when I left the township. And you're probably gonna hear, these vehicles are expensive. And you hear in the community that our assistant chiefs, our battalion chiefs, our captains and lieutenants are riding around Swat Air Township and they're grocery shopping in a vehicle, right? You hear this, in a vehicle that is provided by the taxpayers. Well, guess what happened today? We had a fire chief grocery shopping when he got off work from the township, at Target, and an active cardiac arrest came in. Guess what he did? He ran out to his township-owned vehicle, got his AED and his med bag, and him and a nurse, two nurses, started performing CPR on a gentleman in Target. And as of right now, as we're speaking, that gentleman is alive. You know why? Because that very quick intervention. So I guess we have to ask ourselves, if that vehicle costs 50, 60,000 dollars, how much is that life worth? How much is that life worth? As we get on Facebook and you will see some of the citizens, because we don't inform enough, and the past we didn't, of why that vehicle is allowed with that assistant chief to go to Giant or go to Target or go to Sam's and pick up their groceries, and then they can quickly respond, it's because of instances that happened today at Target. We saved the person's life. That's why we have these vehicles. That's why I support the vehicles. That's why I support the assistant chiefs. And when you look at the administration of the fire department, this is the misconception. Each fire department was independent. Under this guy's leadership, you have an HR department, you have a health and safety department, you have an administration department. It's actually ran like a business now, as it should be, instead of independence. If anyone knows anything that has a public safety background, you understand that there are rules and regulations when you arrive on a fire scene. At one point, anywhere, given point that you went in Swat Air Township, the rules and the regulations were different, and I mean how you operated on the fire scene. That's no longer done that way because we have standard operating guidelines, they're called SOGs, under this gentleman's leadership. This gentleman's been here for several boards, several different majority of boards, and I feel bad that he has to continue to get berated in public, and he does a hell of a job. And continue to let him do his job. Now, I just have one question, because I actually wanted to clarify all the information that was said up there, so the public actually has an understanding of what's going on. Chief Iverson, I just have one question, I didn't wanna ask because it seemed like a heated debate. For the fire coordinator position, will this person at least be qualified to drive our apparatus that, when that person is on duty, that they will be able to respond to calls? So essentially, it would be someone that can respond to our calls during their hours of working.
That would be the hope, yes.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything further?
Yes, Madam President, just to clarify, on the vehicles, I wasn't just asking about fire vehicles. I was asking about all vehicles, including stormwater and sewer. And if I have to put a right-to-know and request with the sewer authority, I'll do that, just let me know. But it has nothing to do with my saying that people shouldn't have vehicles, I just wanna make sure that we're accountable. And as far as, you know, having less vehicles last year than we had this year, I am aware that there were two vehicles sold to surrounding municipalities that were, actually, one was sold for a really, really good price. I mean, a $74,000 vehicle, and I think we sold it for like, I don't know, 30? I'm not sure, because I actually never saw the plan to sell it, so, but I'd be curious to know how much we sold that to Stilton Borough for. Does anybody know?
We didn't sell any vehicles to Stilton Borough.
Well, we, but it was sold, and it was one of the vehicles that's used in emergency service in our township. So if, if that's one less emergency vehicle off of our roads, I just wanted to know how much it was sold for.
Swat Air Township didn't sell any vehicles. Swat Air Fire must be.
So we didn't sell any, any vehicles, any tacos or anything to Stilton Fire?
We sold a ladder truck and that's it.
Oh, did we lease anything to Stilton?
No, we didn't.
Really?
No, Swat Air Township did not sell anything to Stilton.
Okay, okay, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, I'll double-check that. I'll check.
Firemen's Relief did.
Oh, Firemen's Relief, well, I just said any emergency vehicle on our township roads.
That's not our organization.
I said any emergency vehicle on our township roads.
You didn't, actually, you said any vehicle that was purchased.
Honestly, this is, you know, and you wanna know why I get so frustrated with the deception that's going on?
Because you ask questions and then you add things on and expect other people to know what you meant.
He added one by saying, well, Swat Air Fire Rescue did, so that obviously.
That's accurate.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that for answering that. The other, the final thing I had to say was, you know, just going back to the whole public service thing, when I point out information, it by no means was to degrade anybody, or I don't think it's degrading to put out there a public employee's salary, what they make to the taxpayers. It's in our budget every year. That's not degrading. If someone feels degraded, then I'm sorry, but that's not, that's transparency. And I don't like it when, you know, people try to paint this picture that I'm being degrading because I'm asking questions and I'm putting out there pertinent information. And if you're worried about the perception from the public, then maybe, maybe you should rethink the things that you're doing. Thank you.
And just in response to that, I didn't say degrading, so I'm not sure where that's coming from.
No, I'm not, I'm not addressing it with you.
Okay, but let me finish. I think the issue is you continuously single one employee out, so that's, that's where, that's where the issue.
We're talking about his assistant.
We are at this point, but it's a, it's a constant thing, you constantly single out Chief Iverson.
No, I'm not, listen, I'm sorry.
So that's where the issue comes in, for me personally, I'm not gonna speak for anyone else up here.
I'm not singling anyone out.
That's the issue that I have.
If it, it doesn't matter who would be in that position, if the same decisions are being made, no matter who's in that position, I would be asking the same questions. It has nothing to do with singling out. It has to do with I have questions, with the decisions are being made. And I also have concerns that when people talk about, you know, we've got less equipment this year than we had, you know, last year, we've also had a significant number of accidents over the last few years, and I think that that's something that needs to be addressed. Because at some point, we are going to run out of equipment. We're going to have to go out and purchase new equipment. And you can say we have a $1 million fire budget, that's great, if you were only purchasing one, a half of a piece of equipment, because the average, you know, I think the average engine now is going for at least 1.2 million. So, and the costs aren't going down, and these are all things that we need to be aware of as a board. It's our responsibility to not just make decisions for now, to look at the bigger picture. And we shouldn't, we shouldn't, you know, spread ourselves so thin when we know that there's other things that we're gonna have to pay for. Like a 30-plus acre new premier park in the township, you know, and we are gonna have to hire somebody for that. There's a lot of positions that need filled. We are, I have never seen so. We are, I have never seen so, since I've been on the board, and I'm sure, I've never seen our public works department with so little people. People are leaving. I've never seen our administration with so little people. I've, I mean, this is the first year and a half that I've ever seen that we didn't have a township manager. We've got issues. Oh, and I had a complaint over the weekend. Someone reached out to me, they took a picture of equipment at the Crest Park in our township, with equipment that's boarded up. So we're gonna go out and purchase a, you know, get another person to come in and pay someone when we have parks that need maintained and are not being maintained?
You do realize it's two entirely different budgets, though, right?
I'm not talking about this budget versus, it's all taxpayer money.
It is all taxpayer money, but fire can only pay for fire, the general fund pays for the things that you're talking about.
Millages can be adjusted, money can be shifted. I, we all know how the township budget works, Commissioner Ellis. So I'm not, I'm not, did I miss something?
No, what you're saying was confusing, because that's not how the budget works.
It wasn't confusing for the people that are listening.
I mean, it is, because that's not how it's allowed to work, so... But what I will say too is...
I will tell you, the fire tax has gone up, has been increased, okay? Fire tax has gone up, and I have the numbers to show it. So all I'm saying is that it adds up, and it's all taxpayer money. Whether it's a fire fund, or the debt service fund, you can argue that they're separate funds, but they all come from the taxpayers. All the money's coming from the taxpayers. Thank you.
With regard to the budget, next week we'll be giving the public the dates of the meetings. I would suggest anyone that's here or watching that has any interest in what's going on with the fire budget, come to that meeting, so those, those will be made available at next meeting. So do we have any further discussion with regard to the purchase of these two vehicles? All right, hearing none, Secretary Savage, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Tuckey?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubek?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele?
Yes.
President Ellis?
Yes. All right, we are up to item 14, appointments to boards and commissions. This is on our agenda every month, every, every meeting that we have. We don't have any openings on any boards at this time, so we're gonna move on to item 15, to visitors' requests and comments. Again, you can come forward, state your name and address, as well as write it down, if you haven't previously spoken, and then you may begin your comments.
Joanne Sebert, from the beautiful village of Bressler. I was in the fire service in my younger days, and we did go to parades. But we were five fire companies with five pieces or more of apparatus and a crew, crew in each of the stations. And some of them would go on parades, but someone would stay behind. I don't think Commissioner Tuckey was worried about the number of people responding to the call. I think he was worried about losing a piece of apparatus, too. So we, we used to go on parades all the time. Certain other fire companies would go on a parade, the other ones stayed behind. What did we do? We called in a neighboring fire company to sit in our station and cover us while we went on a parade. That, but we don't have that ability anymore, because you have two stations. One of them will be out at a parade, you only have one station now with their equipment. Are they bringing in another, a guest fire company, sit in their station and respond? That's what we used to do. And as far as having the number of paid or, basically now that all the volunteers are getting some kind of reimbursements, they're all basically somehow paid. But with all of that, and, and what Commissioner Zubek was talking about, about the amount of duties, that was $30,000 ago, you know? So you don't have enough people in all of those appointments to do the work of an assistant for the chief. I watch Facebook, I see a lot of these firefighters at pop-up barbecues, and fundraisers, and, and all these little different things where you're meeting with the public and stuff like that. One of those could go and check for exit signs. You can, those people can be utilized and not have to sit there and bring in another person to assist the chief. I think that is a, a, something that we have to watch our pennies, and that is an unnecessary expense, not when we have that many people that are dedicated to the service as far as being assistant chiefs and battalion chiefs, and they should all be able to do all, all those little minute investigations without having to hire somebody else. So as a J, J, Joanne Q, public, I don't think that is a proper use of my tax dollars. But you're trying to compare the fire service five years ago to present. It's not the same. You're down to two fire stations, one that's can, but will stay behind, the other one's going to a parade. Love the parades, we went to them all the time. But we always made sure there was, and the problem is, you have a fire company that would be willing to cover while Rutherford goes on a parade. Oh, that's right, they don't have a piece of apparatus. You know why? Because it's sitting in a compost center, probably. That is poor management. All I can say is, guys are sad.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time?
It's a race.
Rock, paper, scissors?
I got it. Gotcha.
All right, I got one, I got, I was writing notes down, and I never do that.
Just again, for the public, for people watching, just, you don't have to write your name and address again, but could you say it again?
What?
For the public, so that you can say your name and address again?
Mickey Rap, 7736 Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA 17111. Do you want my social?
Sure. Share it.
Ends in 0599. Okay, question. I'm not the sharpest crown in the box, but two fire stations, 1,000 calls a year, 365 days in a year, that's, that's a lot of calls for two fire stations, right? Hmm, 365, wow, that's two, that's almost two and a...
We run more than 1,000 calls.
What's that?
We run more than 1,000 calls.
So 1,000 calls a year with two fire stations?
Mm-hmm.
360, that's 2.65 calls a day out of a year? And we're going down?
Yeah, because there's not volunteers.
But Mary Claus has people...
No, she doesn't.
Really?
Watch the fire board meeting. Mary and I had a very public discussion on the state of Chambers Hill Fire Company.
Okay.
And it's no one's fault.
Uh, no, but I mean...
It's not the board's fault, it's not Mary's fault, it's no one's fault.
Okay, so if people want to volunteer...
Uh-huh.
To open up Chambers Hill Fire Company again, will you do it?
We've tried for the last year and a half.
Longer than that.
Well, we, we have, I mean, it started in 2020, in '22, and we've been trying ever since to re, to get people there.
Okay, well, hotel inspections and code violations. What happens if one of those hotels catches on fire? We sold our ladder truck.
No, we have a ladder truck.
We still have a ladder truck?
Yeah.
What happened to the one we just sold?
It was sold.
Why did we sell it?
Because we didn't need it.
What did we replace it with?
We didn't.
But we need more fire trucks.
And say we need more fire trucks.
I have a 1972 Mack Pumper.
Let's put it in service.
That sits in my garage with 28,000 original miles on it. Why do we have to change these fire trucks out? And why do we get rid of a perfectly good apparatus? So what, what did we sell it for, like pennies on the dollar, when it's, when they're like 1.5 million to replace right now?
Actually...
How old was it?
That one was, right now, with 2.5 million to 3 million, I believe, and it would take three to five years to get it.
Brand new, yes, that's correct.
Right.
How old, how old was the one that was sold?
It only had 10,000 miles on it, it was 2017.
I was gonna say, mine's a '72 with 21,000 miles on it.
And the other company turned around and...
So what, I mean, what are you trying to get at?
I'm just, I'm just curious, I mean, you know, you take out, you take one person out of the mix, and you think you can replace it. You take one apparatus that's out of the mix, and you think you can replace it. But if we're taking five fire companies down to two, but our calls are going up to 1,000 a year, like I said, I'm not the sharpest crown in the box, but I'm like, what the heck?
What are 80% of our calls? What are 80% of our calls?
Can I interject?
Medical calls.
Can I interject? You, you're sharp enough, you're a businessman.
What's that?
You're sharp enough, you're a businessman. So I want to explain to you where we were at, and would lead us to some of the decisions of why we had to do what we do. So that fire truck was leased. So let me give you an example, you run a business, you run a construction business.
Yeah.
Here's the type of shape that this township was in when I came in. We leased a $6,000 saw. What's that tell you? You're a construction worker.
Yeah.
We leased a $6,000 saw. It was a $15 million budget, we couldn't pay cash for that.
Maybe the chief...
Now, now, now do you, now...
I don't know, but why, why are we, why are we buying vehicles versus, do we look at a corporate lease? With a maintenance plan?
So let me, let me explain to you this way. Pliggett was doing about 7% on almost $20 million. So you do the math, we're getting more than a million in interest. It's cheaper for us, financially smart, to buy outright rather than lease.
Absolutely.
Right, that's why we're getting rid of leases, because you know what the fire truck did? It just sat. We make money off our investments now, more than we ever did, so now it's, let's buy it. That's why, that's why I gave you the example, it made no sense for us to lease a $6,000 saw. So what we did, Mickey, a, a, and this is the general fund, the fire fund, they're all restricted funds. The general fund can only go to certain things. The fire fund can only go to certain things. Debt services funds, same thing. Liquid fuels, same exact thing. So what we did is, over the course of the last 18 months, is we continued to get ourselves out of leases and pay these leases off, so we're not paying interest. That's where we were, we were cash flow broke, because we were tied up in so many leases. And, and, and to get ourselves out of that position, because you're a businessman, you understand it, to put yourself in a better financial position, you're only in a better financial position if you have cash flow or you have money in the bank collecting interest.
Right.
And that's what you're seeing happen in a township, to put us back on a good financial path. So that's why the fire truck was sold, okay? Because it was under lease, and it wasn't used. It was just sitting.
But wouldn't you replace it, though? I mean, how...
No, we had already had, we had already had a ladder truck.
Katie, how many pieces of apparatuses did we have at one point? And what were down to?
We, we, but...
I remember they all leased?
We, we, we had two ladder trucks. One wasn't used ever, it, it just sat. There was no need for it. We were paying insurance, we were paying a lease on it, we were paying maintenance, just to maintain. Does that make, that's not a smart business decision.
Okay.
And then for the Chambers Hill situation, this keeps coming up. And, and I live in Chambers Hill, I live right down the street from you.
And, yeah, and you all live, and I, I mean, Chief Emerson, I think you do a great job. I mean, that's me personally, I mean, I, I thank you for what you do.
Chambers Hill's been out of service for three years. Three years, three years, they've been trying to recruit volunteers. At one point, even before I came on this board, and when I came on this board, they got 15 volunteers. Where are those 15 volunteers? And I just learned the, the very last meeting that Chambers Hill was offered a lease from Swatir Township, to lease 40% of their building, and part-time firefighters will be paid there. You know what the Chambers Hill board did? They said no and voted it down. They said no and voted it down, Mickey. You live in Chambers Hill, you're right, 10 minutes. That accident that took place on Chambers Hill Road, that major accident with the six people that get drenched? That's my family. That was my family. Five, less than five minutes from the road from that station. So here's what I'm trying to say. You, you got a, you got a meeting there right now, we're gonna rile the public up, we're gonna have the news there, right? But you were given an option from Swatir Township to lease 40% of your building and put a fire truck and part-time firemen there. Why would your board turn something, something down like that? That doesn't make sense. Why is Swatir Township in the business of paying for people's buildings, and the taxpayers will never own them, Mickey? That doesn't make any sense, I can't fathom it.
All right, well, I just, that, they, those were the notes I was writing down. But the other quick things I have, we don't have, the township doesn't have an HR department, do they?
We do.
Yes, now, we never did.
I thought it was a phone, I thought you switched, all switched to a phone-in.
What do you mean?
The last meeting I was at, they said HR, you call a phone number.
No, we have HR towns.
Oh.
You're doing a benefit, you're doing a benefit.
But we don't have, we still have a township supervisor.
Manager now.
Manager.
Now.
But yet, we all can get cited. Doesn't make sense. The final thing I would have to say, three days after the Penetras got their letter, I got a letter and an invoice for $300 from a building that I completed in 2021 on my property. Four years ago. Four years ago, I get a bill, $300. I paid it, however, my bookkeeper last week found the copy of the paycheck that I paid it in 2021 at the final thing. So I'll be submitting that. I'll probably send it certified letter to the codes office, because I don't want to be arrested. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments?
Tom, I can't believe you let Shane diss you like that. You leased those trucks.
Just again, for the public, for people listening, can you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Chris Freeze, I spoke before. I can't believe that. You leased those trucks to the, that sits there and shame you. Oh, well, enough of that. This is the first class, like I say, the first-class township. You people are responsible. You point to him, he doesn't, I mean, he can advise you, but you have to pay attention and learn what's going on. One thing that wasn't brought up in any of the discussions tonight, Tom, you usually bring it up, is the population of this township has gone up by at least 12,000 people since those, since those reports or studies that Shane brought up. So those, 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 those things are obsolete. And are obsolete also because of the number of, of fire apparatus in the township. So you guys gotta wake up, act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time?
Hello, everyone.
Took a page out of Ms. Sebert's book for...
That's right. I told you, maybe someone come in the mail for free, so... Ben Douglas, 649 Barbara Drive, Chambers Point. I just want to just educate everyone in here in the room, because we're all here, and those who are looking on Facebook. The US Code for the displaying of the United States flag, the United States flag needs to be at the right side of the speaker. Madam, you're the Speaker of the House, so it needs to be at your right, and that flag needs to be replaced. So if you want to just Google it, US Code, Chapter 1, Title 4, Flag and Seal, Seat of Government in the State's Display of the US Flag. When used on a speaker's platform, the flag should hold the position of the superior prominence in advance of the audience and in the position of the honor at the clergyman, it's not a church, but if it was, or speaker's right faces the audience. So it'll be at your right, madam, facing the audience. Any other flags, I don't care what it is, any other flags so displayed should be placed on the left of the clergyman or speaker or right of the audience. So that flag needs to be to your right side, facing the audience. I don't know who's in charge of it, but it's just for information purposes. Let's please correct that. Thank you, team.
You taught me something new today.
Yep, and just so that...
Taught me something new today.
The only reason it's like that at this point is because we're obviously in the basement, we're not usually up here. When we're in the meeting room, it is correct, but we can get that...
I know, we corrected it when we were up there.
Yeah, we can get it down here, too.
Okay, we'll get it right, we'll get it right.
That got good.
Yeah.
Taught me something new.
And hopefully, next month, we'll... And hopefully next month, we'll actually be in the meeting room, because it is under construction right now. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time? All right, we're gonna move on to item sixteen, possible stormwater violations for investigation. This is also on our agenda every meeting. Um, if you have any stormwater violations, you can come and state them at the podium, or you can always mail. Um, so you know we're getting up, we're up to commissioners' requests and comments, additional business and correspondence. Commissioner Tucky?
Yeah, um. Lot tonight. Uh, first, I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight. See a lot of new faces in the audience. Um. I'm sorry, uh, some residents had the issues they had. And I'm grateful it's getting resolved. When it comes to the fire service, like it was said during the meeting, I mean, we're for the volunteers, it's not, nothing like that. But I think we have to try to be as smart as we can with the decisions we're making. And I don't necessarily agree all the time with what's coming in front of us. Um, the piece apparatus that was talked about earlier about being on a lease, it was, uh, from memory, two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, it was called a Quint. And, uh, myself and Commissioner Zubek was against selling it, getting rid of it. It was actually put out for bid. And I think another, uh, was it Lancaster or another municipality, I believe, put the bid on it. And then that municipality, what was it?
A private seller, it was not a municipality.
I thought it was.
Try to get my.
No. It was Command Fire Apparatus bought it.
Okay.
They buy used fire trucks and resell them.
Uh, from memory, I thought it was a municipality, but regardless, that piece of equipment, we had the chance to stop the sale through the bid process through this board, and the majority of the board decided not to do that. They went, it sold for, from memory, it was like, uh, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, I believe. That piece of equipment, I believe, they got one point two million for. It only had ten thousand miles, just over ten thousand miles on it, and it was in great shape. Uh, I personally thought we should have kept the equipment. That, and, you know, if you want to get rid of a piece of equipment, that definitely wasn't the piece I don't believe we should have gotten rid of. Um, and not only that, the amount of money that we ended up losing, because, I don't know about you, but hundreds of thousands of dollars makes a difference. Makes a difference to the taxpayers for, uh, you know, for basic expenses going through. And at the time, we disagreed with that decision. When it comes to, uh, spending, we, here again, just, I'm concerned with the direction we're going in with a lot of things. And I have been. I don't know if anyone ever watches Dolphin County Commissioners' meetings, but, uh, Commissioner Conley makes a visit there quite often. During the meetings, he makes comments directed towards many different people. There's been at least two meetings where he put out myself and Christine Zubek during the meetings, saying we didn't do certain things properly and I, I just don't appreciate having false information put out to the public about myself or Commissioner Zubek or anyone else. And it's done constantly, I'm really getting tired of it. I do things properly, I have from, I have for years. I mean, that's the way I was brought up, that's the way we tried to do things. Make sure that I know what I'm doing and make sure that the process goes the way it's supposed to. I'm tired of the false accusations that are being put out there in public. I actually had three people reach out to me today, asking me what's going on. We did everything properly for our campaign. And I'm not bringing my campaign into this, vote for me, don't vote for me, that's your decision. It's not about that. I'm tired of false accusations being put in public constantly. I mean, it's just disturbing, it shouldn't be happening. Um, as far as the Chambers Hill Fire Company goes, I believe Commissioner Conley, you're looking at defunding Chambers Hill Fire Company? According to, uh, something that was put out there, is that correct?
These are your comments, I'll make comments.
Okay, well, that's, from my understanding, is either they were gonna go through with the lease or sell the building, however it goes down, or you're not paying for anything up there, which is fine. What my suggestion is, don't pay for a dime up there at Chambers Hill Fire Company. Let them try to keep recruiting volunteers. Take that engine that's put at the compost facility, at least it was when I checked a week, no, it was like three weeks ago, it's at the compost facility in the garage. I'd like to see that put up to Chambers Hill Fire Company. Don't pay a dime towards Chambers Hill Fire Company, let them, over time, build that fire company back up. And, uh, that's, that's what I'd like to see happen. That way the residents, it won't cost you anything other than that piece of equipment sitting there. And they had just recently, two volunteers that are up there go through their pump classes to be able to, that's part of the process, to be able to get on that engine and drive. Now, I'm not saying they're flush with people right now, because they're not. Let them build it. Let them work with volunteers that want to come through, and it's gonna take time. But let them do it, don't just shut it down. And I, you know, they don't want to lease their facility, that's their decision. But there's nothing wrong, don't pay a dime to Chambers Hill Fire Company. Let them build it back up. Put that engine in there, because who's gonna want a volunteer at a fire company without a piece apparatus? And we have it. We, fortunately, we do have it. It's not gonna cost us anymore, because unfortunately, it came from Brassler. That engine was converted over to Chambers Hill. So, that's what I'd like to see happen. And, uh, and I know, like, over some time, and it's gonna take some time for them to get back on their feet completely, it would work. I feel confident that it will. I appreciate everyone that came out tonight, I hope you have a nice evening, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zubek?
Oh yes, I wanna, I wanna go back to the, um, the comments that have been made at the Dolphin County Commissioners' meeting. I can say with one hundred percent absolute certainty that all of our filings were within the confines of the law and within the filing deadlines. One hundred percent certainty. And it is slanderous to sit up there, week in and week out, and know that you are absolutely wrong and continue to spread lies. And, and continue to, continue to skew your poison all over Dolphin County just because you have a political vendetta against everybody. And it's not just Republicans, it's Republicans, it's Democrats. I guess you can say you're non-biased, because you just hate everybody equally. You're, you have no conscience knowing that you're lying to people and spreading slanderous false accusations. And I'm telling you, stop. It's gonna stop, because I'm going to seek out outside legal representation if it continues. You know it's false, you don't know the, um, Commissioner Conley knows absolutely nothing about campaign finance laws. Your ignorance of the campaign finance laws and your stupidity does not make me corrupt. And I want to know what's, I mean, there are laws that you have to be, that follow. Does it matter who paid what? It's in the reports. Everything that's spent is in a report. Everything that's brought in is in a report. It's transparent. So I don't know what the discrepancy is, I don't know what the issue is. But I know that people are sick and tired of the slander without any proof. You think you could just sit up there and just destroy people's reputations and destroy people's careers, say whatever you want, and no one is ever gonna do anything about it or say anything about it? And, and you know, there's a saying in politics, if you say it enough times, it must be true. Well, that's very, very sad, that that's the, you know, decorum, the honor that you go by. If you say it enough times, it must be true. People want to see proof, people are tired, they, they, they know, most of the people that have reached out to me, they know that I'm an honest person. They know that I care deeply about following the law and the rule of law. They know that. I have a lot of friends in law enforcement, I have a lot of friends in, in all, all across local governments, state government, across the state. This board doesn't know anything about rule of law, because there are local ordinances, there's, you know, rules that you have to follow at the county, there's state laws that you have to follow, and there's, there's reporting requirements for townships, there's all kinds of different things that need to be followed. And there's a lot of stuff that's not being reported and recorded in our own office. You fired the manager, you got rid of the assistant manager, you got rid of the, the secretary. I would like a copy tomorrow of all of our original ordinances that have been filed as per the requirements for record-keeping. I would like a copy of the original ordinances that have to be filed in the vault. I would like copies of the minutes that are supposed to be filed. Because you know what the funny thing is, you might say, oh, we're bringing everything up to speed, some of the state laws are still archaic. So you still have to keep certain records. So I would like those copies. To sit up there and make accusations, I have facts to share with the public about the mismanagement of funds on this board, how you egregiously borrowed money, cut revenue in one year, twenty million dollars, and then you cut taxes, and you can say you cut taxes. And then the very next year, I looked at the revenue, revenue, we went from fifteen million in twenty twenty to thirteen million in twenty twenty-one. Two million dollar deficit that your poor mismanagement put us into, I think that's criminal. I think that people should be looking into our township finances. It's really disgraceful that you can sit up there and pretend that you're an honorable person, and, and you talk a good talk, and people that listen to you and don't know what's going on, they might have a tendency to believe those false accusations. But that just makes you a bad person. It just makes you a bad person with vendettas, you want to be vindictive, you want to go after people. You want to slander people, you want to go after their careers. People on this board have actually called people's employers when they didn't like what they had to say. And to, and their employers had to tell them to stop making comments. I've been told that firsthand. I don't think that's right. I think that there's a thing called free speech, and everybody up here wants to talk about freedom of speech. You know, it's a good, it's a good thing to say when you're in public, and, but you don't live by that rule. I mean, you censored me earlier tonight when you turned off my microphone, and all you had to do was hit the gavel. There's comments removed from Facebook on a regular basis. There's, there's all kinds of things that go on. But to show up at a county commissioners' meeting, week in and week out, and launch false accusations and, and ask for investigations and all of this, that's your MO, Commissioner Conley. I don't think there's anybody in any of your opposition, anywhere, and you see everybody's opposition, anywhere where you haven't asked for them to be investigated. Where, you know, that's, you know, I'm just gonna throw as much against the wall and see what sticks. And then nothing sticks, but it doesn't, it, 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 it doesn't matter, because you've already ruined or hurt someone's reputation. Mission accomplished. They can say it wasn't true. A month goes by, they can prove that it wasn't true, but you've already set out to destroy and slander them and defame them. I'm sorry about the amount of time I'm taking here tonight. But you know what? It's pretty sad. It's pretty sad, and I think people need to know, and I hope maybe I talk long enough, that maybe somebody will turn on their computer and catch a nip, you know, whatever. Is that what everybody does up here, they like to grandstand, maybe somebody will listen? Well, I've got news for you. The slanderous statements in public need to stop. Show proof or leave the room. Because I can tell you there is none. The laws are followed. And if you don't understand campaign finances, then you have no room to speak. Which brings me to another point. Campaigning with township resources. I'm, I'm mentioning campaigning with township resources here tonight, because that's exactly what's being done in the public, at pop-up barbecues and places like that, when individuals are addressing opponents of myself and Commissioner Tucky as commissioner, as if they're sitting commissioners. They're wearing, you know, township-related gear that looks pretty official, and addressing them as commissioner, so it, it would give the public the perception that that individual is an incumbent commissioner. And they're not being corrected by those individuals, that they're no, not commissioners. I think it's pretty deceiving, pretty deceptive to do that, and it's wrong. And I'd like to remind people that pretending that you're a township official and not correcting the record is wrong as well. I earned my seat here, I ran, I earned my seat here. Anybody running against us, they can earn their seat here too. They don't need, we don't need to use township resources to help them along in their campaigns. By having them show up to all of the township-sponsored events and introducing them, your handpicked candidates, and, and, and use, you know, I mean, there's, there's laws against that too. But yet every, every time I turn around, you know, township page is tagged with, you know, that's fine, people are gonna vote how they want to vote. But I'm just putting it out there so people know that someone asked me the other day if our fire department was endorsing our opponents. So can someone answer, is our fire department taking a position and endorsing our opponents? Commissioner Conley, you're the Chair of Fire, can you please answer? Is our, is our township endorsing opponents in this election? Is the fire service endorsing anybody in this election? Oh, crickets. I just think it all needs to stop. I want to wish everybody, thank you so much for listening. I want to apologize for my passion and emotion this evening. And, um, I do have the desire to do what's right for our township. And to the residents that reached out to me earlier in the week, I'm happy that we were able to raise a, um, reach a resolution. You know, I, I, I want nothing but the best for our residents. I want every visit to our township to be a, a, a good experience, a positive, full of professionalism. If the department head or anybody in that, for that matter disagrees, or, you know, there's, that happens, that happens, and there's, there's nothing wrong with that. But I do want to reiterate the fact that if we had a township manager, and a commissioner should not be running a day-to-day operations of our township, that's also against the first-class township code. If we had a township manager, they would have had another outlet other than the police. You know, and, look, we have a wonderful police department. They're not there to like, you know, hurt anybody, or, I'm sure they were. They're not there to like, you know, hurt anybody or, I'm sure they were probably very good at talking and resign. I, I have nothing but the utmost respect for all of our police officers. They're wonderful, wonderful people and they care. But that's taking resources off of our street if it's not necessary. Um, I just, I just want to make sure, and, and maybe it was, I don't even know. But I will say this, if we had a township manager, it would have been another outlet. I think we need to work on that. I think we need to have key people in places that the residents can actually go to when there's an issue or a dispute. And sometimes, you know, sometimes people are like vinegar and oil. They just don't mix. You can be two great people and still not have a good, you know, communication between you. So a manager, somebody else that they can reach out to gives, you know, would be another outlet. So I'd appreciate it if this board would come into compliance with the ordinances that we have in place, 46-2, I believe. And get a township manager. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Commissioner Connolly?
Um, on the township manager, I think the, uh, the board unanimously. The board unanimously approved, um, hiring and looking, starting a search for a township manager. So it's in the process now. So um, everybody up here is, is aware of, of that and, um, thinking that's going to happen pretty rapidly. So that's, that's a problem solved. I want to touch on something, uh, that was said at last week's meeting. Last month's meeting about population of the township. Vice President Steele was speaking and he said there was 37,000, um, residents or citizens. We actually have 28,000. But earlier that day, we were in a meeting about emergency response and the number 37,000 was put out over and over again for our emergency response in the township on an average, not people working. And it was 28,000 residents, 2,000 citizens in the borough of Paxstang because we provide public safety to, to Paxstang, both fire and police. I believe we're the only, the only, uh, municipality that covers, um, two municipalities, a borough and a township, and that's contracted. They added a thousand people for staff and students, uh, at the Steelton High Fire School District Schools, all of which are in the township. And then there was an average of five or 6,000 people in the hotels. We, we still have more hotels than any other municipality. So, um, I think there, there might have been a misspeak on actual residents, which was what our township, but certainly not on the people that we protect, protect on a daily basis. And that's not adding in people that work here and people that are passing through. But, um, it's a major undertaking. We have an incredible police department. We have an incredible fire department. We have incredible, incredible EMA. They're getting to calls quickly from two stations. We didn't see that response from three, four, and five. The issue with Chambers Hill, I worked with Mary Klaus. They were taken out of service in January of '22. She brought it up in June, uh, June 12th of 2024, that they could get volunteers and get back in service after they had been out of service for 30 months. I worked for an entire year with her. We had an open house at Chambers Hill. We had 170 people attend. I didn't count it. That's the number Mary gave me. After that, 170 people attended, we had one person move forward with an application initially, and then that person didn't continue on. Um, over the year, we got two people that completed the application process. We hear that there were all these people that wanted to do it. They didn't do it. Mary Klaus is an incredible person. She worked hard to get volunteers and it didn't happen. You know, the, the future there isn't set. Commissioner Tuckey asked me about defunding them. There really wasn't nothing about defunding. We were paying 100% of the bills for all those months, for three and a half years, uh, utility bills. And they were doing fundraisers and it brings the community out and I like their fish. I like their chicken. But it's not fair to the taxpayers to continue to pay these bills. So we worked out a plan where we would pay 40% of their bills. They came up with that number. We didn't. They came to us and said 40% of the building, um, we would pay 40% of the bills. Uh, they took it to their membership. They voted no. I don't know why they voted no. I'm not on that board. I wasn't there. They came back. Um, they weren't agreeing. So we had already started to switch the bills over. So Chambers Hill would pay their bills and then we would reimburse them for 40%. So I'm not sure where we go, go from here because we're, we're not going to enter into that agreement. Commissioner Zubek mentioned about a, a park play piece at the crest. Uh, it, it is damaged in, in between the two play pieces and it's blocked off. I toured the parks with Commissioner Steele and Commissioner Ellis couldn't go because three would have been a quorum. So we came back with the data. That, that piece, for people that are concerned about the crest, it's outdated and it's being replaced. So the crest piece will, will be replaced. Um, it's still usable and it has a barrier to keep people away from, um, the dangerous area. So um, bringing it up tonight, it's already in the process. It's, there's money for it. When, when you're a commissioner, you're a commissioner the entire month. So coming in the night of the meeting and raising issues when you could get this information ahead of time, um, kind of seems to me like, like poor planning. And, and I will say this, in my private life, I will say what I want when I want to say it. And there is an issue, since it was brought up with the campaign finance reports, we just saw an election here. And there's rules that are, are to be followed. And I am not saying 100% that Commissioner Tuckey and Commissioner Zubek broke the rules. But the campaign finance information that was submitted by people that they worked with on their campaign contradicts what they put in their report. So if they didn't violate the rules and the laws, then some packs did. And one of them is the Swire Township Republican Pack. Because what happens is if you get signs, banners, t-shirts, you mail things, you are to report that in the time period that you do it. And some people did and some people didn't. And I was in the township during that campaign and I, and I saw this. I, I am a Democrat. I support two Democrats. I don't tell them to go to township events. I mean, that, this is one of the strangest things I heard tonight, that we do pop-up events. That we do national night out. We do all kinds of things, the Swati floats. Some of them are police events, some are fire events. If a citizen running for office goes to that event, that's their choice. If a person sitting up here goes to the event, that's their choice. To not go to an event and then be concerned about who did or to have somebody address somebody in a certain way. I know who the commissioners are. I'm not addressing anybody or introducing anybody. But that doesn't mean I couldn't introduce somebody as a candidate in my personal, private life. So to hear that those people shouldn't be going to township events or now the township events are political because people want to get involved in the community. We had an event on Juneteenth on Moon Street. We've had the event for years. We, we do a pop-up barbecue cookout. We had a medical emergency at that event. We had firefighters in Tahos. They ended up helping not one, but two people in front of Hoyan Latchaw Towers where we have a lot of vulnerable senior citizens. It's great interaction. I love seeing our police. I love it when we have events and we see state police and, and county agencies and law enforcement. It's awesome. But to say that that's endorsing somebody, it's not. I'll tell you what's endorsing a political candidate. When they had the open house at Chambers Hill Fire Company, they invited Scott Perry. It was October 24th. He's in elections shortly after that. They invited Scott Perry and they took pictures with him and they let him speak at a fire open house. Find the time where I was ever involved in something like that. Won't happen. And for anybody that's interested in what Commissioner Zubek seems to be very concerned about, if somebody is slandering you or saying things in public and they are not right, you have a recourse. Complaining about it tonight isn't the recourse. Everything that I said in today's Dauphin County Commissioner meeting, I presented them proof off of their website and you can look it up. Every single thing I said, I had proof off of either their website or Commissioner Zubek Kentucky's website. That's all. I had no, no secrets. Just money spent on a campaign and then a report not filed. That's a problem. We should have free and fair elections and I don't care. She is right. I don't care who does it.
Things were filed.
And, and the other thing I want to be clear about is Commissioner Zubek spoke sometimes negatively about me. I am a strong person. I didn't interrupt. I, anything she said, I just listened to. Okay. Whether it was true or not, I didn't interrupt. But you've seen the behavior exhibited by her tonight. Continue talking when it's not her turn. And there's people here probably wish I'd stopped talking right now, but I'm going to continue my turn. And when it's the next person's turn and the next person's turn, I'm going to be quiet because that's how the meetings work. So to come in here and just misrepresent things, like I've heard things tonight that, that I don't think are accurate and I, and I'll check into. And, and then I've heard things from speakers that, that aren't accurate. And I've heard things that don't really have anything to do with this board or what we do here. I was elected in 13 and I say this, and, and Chris Fries, when you said, I said about population, I say this sometimes too. I was selected in 13. After taxes were increased, five consecutive years in this township doubled. Okay. Doubled over those five years, gradually doubled. And one time I was able to work with the board to lower taxes, but every other time we held the line here. And that doesn't happen at the grocery stores, the gas pumps, your homes. We work hard all the time. And if I'm going to take heat and get blamed for being involved, and, and I, I speak to residents, sometimes it's not resolved the way they want. Sometimes they pick somebody else. But I always try to be fair and it's, it's every day. It's not, it's not one person. It's not one issue. Every single day I'm out in the community and, and I'm trying to do the best thing for this township. And then to come in here and then all these things about, well, I believe in freedom of speech, but you can't talk. I believe you're allowed to say whatever you want, but you can't say that. It, it makes no sense. We, we come in here and unanimously voted, we unanimously voted to update the fire apparatus that we need. And there weren't, they weren't fire trucks. They, they were, um, Tahos, utility vehicles, things that are out there. We heard the police chief say 80% of those calls, and Mickey, I think it was 1277. You said a thousand. I think it's 1277 last year. That's a lot of calls. 80% of those, 80% of those are, are medical assists and we have Tahos with medically equipped equipment to get there. The old way of thinking that you need big fire trucks all the time for every call, the number, the number of fires, if you look at the reports and the reports come out next week and hopefully people will just keep coming and coming. Cause you come one time and you get misinformation and then someone told you something. I don't work that way. I don't work that way. I've worked with Zach for, for a couple of months and I don't know of an incident where Zach called the police. But I heard tonight from two people, they called the police on somebody other than the most recent incident. I don't, I don't know that. I would, I would like to know that. I know people have said that, but I don't know that that, that happened. And that's something that I, that I think I should know. So I'm going to check into that and I'm going to find it out from the police. I'm going to find it out from the police here. So I'm, 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 I'm going to move on to, to, to the next subject here. Um, the fire truck that we sold wasn't being used. It wasn't being used. We have two stations. There's a VFIS study that went back to before I was elect, 13, 14, 15, and talked about a two-fire station concept. And ironically, when Chris Fries said the population increased, it was based on population increasing. It was, it was based on a build-out of the township. And two stations with a quick response can cover the township better than five stations with a slow response. We're getting people out the door in a minute and a half. And I respect the volunteer fire service and what people did in the past to get us here. But if they're home responders and they have a lot of things going on, they're not coming. So just saying the building's there, you might get people to respond at six minutes to the station. We're at the scene in six minutes. So for, for all this banter about the way it used to be in fire, things are improving in the township. Look at the response times. And, and to do that, we're, we're, we're hiring people right now, part-time. To, to be surprised that there's not a guaranteed response, local municipalities are called the authority having jurisdiction for public safety and fire response. We have the authority, but that doesn't mean we can make volunteers go. So what we do is when we see that volunteers aren't showing up, they're not showing up Monday through Thursday at certain hours. We see that in a report. That's where we put the part-timers. We didn't hire part-timers to get rid of volunteers. And what we've seen is more people go volunteer when there's part-timers there. And I'm going to say this right now, and I'm pretty sure if I'm wrong, Chief Everson, jump in, but we have nine part-timers that we hired. I'll just ask you, is every one of them a professional firefighter by career? Or EMT? I mean, they're, they're professionals in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Most of them are full-time firefighters elsewhere, but they all have to be certified as a firefighter to an EMT and a driver operator to get hired.
And we got resistance from certain people to doing that for the community, to bring in highly trained professionals. And most of them are, are younger people that have a full-time job, but are willing to work here in our township. And we got pushback that we were taking this from the volunteers. No, we were saving lives and protecting property and doing what we're supposed to do as the authority having jurisdiction. And, and I'll say this, I came to the meetings for about 14 years and sat out there where you are. Probably attended more meetings than anybody over those 14 years. And if I had an idea or some, I would speak, I didn't speak all the time. But anymore, we have a process that's going 10 years and it's being completed and then we hear a piece of it, a piece of it. And then somebody says we should throw, throw that out and start over. We should move on. We should do this. We have, we have a vehicle replacement plan and it's here every year, no matter who's sitting up here. But tonight, some people didn't like it. Just, just a plan, just like state police, county, the military. Every so often you replace vehicles. When we did it tonight, it was a problem. When we promoted those four firefighters, and those are volunteers, I might be wrong, but I thought we unanimously voted to do that at, at the meeting. And then tonight, we're throwing it out as if it was a bad thing. Together, we can do lots of good things. If we keep picking, you know, after we did it and then switching that we're not for it, I don't do that. I own the decision. And Chris Fries, when we leased those pieces of apparatus, that was the best move at the time. And I will tell you that because by getting through, Shane's saying now, and I agreed with him and voted that way. You know why? Because things changed financially. But when we got the apparatus, we got three pieces and by buying three, we were able to get an incredible discount. So we got those individually at less than anybody would have got them buying one. So when you take a decision, and it was a board decision, I'm one person, not the president, not the vice president, but five people up here. But when you take a board decision and then you do it, and then years later, the piece isn't being used and it has incredible value in that market and you sell it and you get 875,000. I think it was a $1.2 million piece or 1.1 when we bought it. So imagine that return on our investment and we were, we were still leasing. So you're right. So we saved that. But then to say that the person who bought it, and, and I know the, I know the person that bought it and I, I went down there and looked at, at other pieces there. You know what he told me? He bought another piece from one of our fire stations when they were individually owned. And that he lost $100,000 on it because he restores, rehab, checks that and puts a warranty on it and it had a warranty repair. So for somebody to buy it at 875 and then put it up on sale for 1.2, we didn't lose anything. If he sells it for that, he's responsible for a certain amount of time. He had to put money into it. That's the way it works. To, to then be an expert on everybody else's business and everybody else's decision years later, really, it really doesn't, you know, make any sense. And what I'm getting, when I sat in the audience, I listened, I learned, I ran. Not saying everything I say is right. But I will stick with it and own my decision. So you're saying in 2025, the decision in 2017 isn't right tonight and Commissioner Steele beat me up, but we made the decision in '24. Seven years later, I agreed with the decision and we voted to do it. So, I mean, I know you had some, some humor in that, but that, that's really, that doesn't bother me that I made a decision years ago that was the best for the township at the time and the board majority went for it. And then years later, new people on the board looked at it differently. Some time had passed and we did something different. And I want to, I'm going to wrap it up with this. When I came on this board, there were no canines. There were no canines here. Okay? And I pushed and pushed and the board was against it because someone had asked for overtime. Someone who, who was entitled to it in the contract, police officer, more than one, that had a canine, they wanted overtime that they were entitled to, to, to care for the dog and take it to the vet, to run the dog. And the Board of Commissioners, short-sighted, didn't want to spend that little bit of money and then had a vendetta against those officers and disbanded that program. The program went away. When I got on the board, I was one saying, we need to bring that back. I still had some opposition. When I finally got where I thought I had the majority of the board, we brought that. The handler Gibson that you saw, I went when we, we picked out Bane, but I went when we picked out Kicks too. And, and pushed for that. And then we started to, to add the dogs. That was taken away. Just think about this. The dogs were removed from this township by people like us. People sitting up here at a table that couldn't get along and couldn't make decisions. They removed the dogs. So when we say we restarted that. So when we say we restarted that, there had been a gap of time. Those dogs are incredible in the community. They're absolutely incredible. And crime has gone down since we had the dogs and morale has gone up. And I think it's an incredible move. But I just want to show you, when commissioners make bad decisions, it can hurt the community. And I was proud to be part of the return of the canines. And I'm kind of sad tonight because I was there when we got Kicks. And Kicks' first time in public, was that an Easter egg hunt that we had here? And his first time he went to school was at Rutherford Elementary and I was at those events. Be careful what you wish for. If you think stuff is funny and it's a joke and you do what somebody says, you could really mess things up. And no matter what anybody thinks about me, I am always going to make the best decision that I can for this township. And in my personal life, if somebody doesn't like that, I expect to uphold and have other people held to the same standards. If people did their campaign finance reports right, they got nothing to worry about. But I will end by saying this. Don't take my word for it. Go on the website, Dauphin County Elections, look it up and think about this. You just saw the election here. In the reporting period, when all the signs and everything were out, there's two people that didn't file a report. Two people. And I'm talking about all the municipalities and everything from Judge and all the way through. Two people didn't file a report. So it certainly stands out. And if they think that they're justified by not doing that or they think they did the right thing, the problem they have is with the other reports that people that supported them filed. You're going to have an expenditure and then if you gave it to somebody, it'll match or the other way around. And that was the point I was making today, that it doesn't match on these reports. And if they have a valid explanation, that's fine. But pointing out the truth and what's posted on a county public elections page is not slander. Thanks everybody for coming tonight, that's all I have.
If you know it's not true and you've been told it's not true, it's slander.
Vice President Steele?
I would appreciate everyone that came out tonight and enjoyed the evening with us online and then joined us in the crowd as well. A few events coming up. I'm going to talk about the next two meetings so we make sure everybody knows what's coming up in the near future here. July 12th is the Swati float still on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Swati float is July 12th at McNaul Park, 11 to 12:30, is that what it is? And then followed by July 19th, the Sweatair Family Festival Day at Veneta Park. That's from 12:00 PM to until 7:30. Hopefully everyone will come out and join us. Lot of topics discussed here tonight. I think in some ways, we're all saying the same thing, but how do we meet in the middle and actually get what we need to get done, right? And Democrat, Republican, I could care less. When I ran, it wasn't about a Democrat, it wasn't about a Republican. It was about real issues and fixing this township. And I think all five of us up here will agree that the township through years was not in the best financial position. And there were some hard and tough decisions that just had to be made, right, wrong or indifferent. But the beautiful thing about running a local election is especially at large, you represent everyone equally. It doesn't matter you're a Democrat or Republican. When you're elected, you represent every single voting precinct within Sweatair Township. But you know, the most important thing is consensus and consideration. And at some times, there has to be compromise. There are going to be things that you're not going to necessarily get 100% of what you would like to see, whether that's through policy, whether that's through legislation or whether that's through a project, right? But you have to, you have to have some decorum, some civility in a manner where, one, you show the security of the governance to the public, that you have the ability to get things done. And as you're getting those things done, and you might, you might have been for it or you might have been against it. And if it was the latter of the two, you were against it, at some point, you have to continue on with the governance. And things that you didn't agree with 18 months, two years, five years ago, they're in the past. It's, we all recognize that we got to do better and we got to, and we have to continue to move on. For the couple that came up here, I forgot your last name and I apologize for that. But one of the things that you touched on was one of the things that I've been saying for the last 18 months and some of the things that we are trying to fix. Because in your statement, what I know that I can confirm is our practices, our internal processes, the way we handled our billing from department to department, from a business standpoint, was deplorable. There's no doubt about that, right? And over the last 18 months, because I'm one of the co-chairs of finance, what I've been working toward is all of our billing clerks, our finance department and all of our staff that handles invoice, whether it be for Stormwater, sewer, township zoning permits, you go to one place and that's where you used to pay your sewer bill. Because we can fix those issues that you're dealing with right now. And I've been reporting this, the issues that we've been having on all the departments now for about 18 months. Is it perfect? No, we're nowhere near there yet. Is it better than what we were? Absolutely. And that's why the finance department or Zach, you're seeing that some of those bills might be late and they might, they actually might have been already paid. I'm not going to deny that. We had at one point, 12 years ago, 14 years ago, we used Excel spreadsheets. We use Accufine now. So if you're in that window where you were in an Excel spreadsheet versus an Accufine system, we're trying to clear that information off the books. Because not only do people owe the local government here, the local government owes people money back as well. And those security releases have to be taken care of. I mean, there's some accounts where we've been sitting on people's money for seven years, just collecting interest. So it's a work in progress. I totally understand what you went through from the invoice because this gentleman here and this young lady back here, when we started this process, we had over a quarter million dollars on the books of money that was owed to Sweatair Township. And to give you an example of that, if someone completed a project and they still had an outstanding invoice, you paid for that. I paid for that. We didn't go after them for their, for their engineering fees. We just said, okay, fine, who cares? Well, that's not the way we do business, right? And if we owe you, because I've already sent the emails to Stormwater because I'm the Stormwater chairman, we're going to make it right. And I expect that you would do your due diligence like you came to the podium and said, hey, we owe you something, we're going to make it right too. But I wanted to throw that out there. Your concern has been heard. It's something that we're already working on, even though some people don't agree with it. I get it. But that makes more of a business sense where everything is financial. The financial hub of this township is located at one place. So we don't have these mistakes in the future. So I just wanted to throw that out there to you. As far as the other situation between you and Zach, that is not, Sweatair Township is ran by committee. I was surprised by Commissioner Zubek and obviously the email that came through. I did reach out to Zach's committee chair, who is Commissioner Conley. It has to work through his committee first and then he'll, if he feels necessary, it needs to come over to the Personnel Committee. We'll come over to the Personnel Committee and Personnel and HR will get involved, which I'm the Personnel Chair. But I can tell you this, the conversations have already taken place between Commissioners Zubek saying something to me, me discussing the email and the things that were said to Commissioner Conley. So don't think that, obviously, we're not going to discuss a personnel matter in public, right? But don't think that it's not going to be handled. If there's some egregious issues there, it's going to be taken care of. Our firemen today, Police Department, Life Team, and I don't even know the two nurses' names. Hopefully we got their names so we can thank them for what they did. I'm going to tell you what, they did an outstanding job. I mean, Chief Bradnick being on the scene already. I was at the township building. I seen the Tahoe's rode out of the parking lot here. I seen three cops come down this way as I'm going to turn into Target. There's two more cops. I mean, our whole entire Police Department, Fire Department and EMS responded. And I'd say we worked this guy for about 20 minutes. And he's alive. Like that's something to be proud of. That's not something not to be proud of. Like they were volunteers, part-timers, Police Department, EMS and bystanders that helped to bring back somebody's life. I get it. It looks as if, you know, you're wasting money, but you're not. Because public safety is about having the equipment on standby when the emergency happens. You have to understand that. You know, a example of that is the Police Department has to be tactically ready for a terrorist attack or a civil unrest. That equipment is expensive. They can't just run around with their pistols. As a police officer, now you've got to have some long guns and different types of equipment. That equipment's costly because it's about the what-if. The Fire Department needs a $2 million ladder truck that might not get used one time in a year, but it responds to calls, but it actually might not get put in service to actually put a fire out. But it's that one time that it does get put in service to put that fire out. That's what public safety is about. Being on standby, on the ready, prepared when the event does happen. And we, as a board, put a lot of money into public safety. That is one of our number one priorities, whether it be for EMS, the Fire Department and the Police Department. And don't think I'm throwing shade or shots at the Police Department when I say they are about 60% of our budget. They're about 60% of our budget for a reason. Because we believe in having a safe community where you can live. Pretty soon here, I think we're on target to have the highest number of police officers that Sweatair Township has ever had in its history. That's not a bad thing. That's a good thing because Sweatair Township is growing. We're 13 square miles, not including our water. And our police, I don't know what you're on, about 20-plus thousand calls a year? Like, like that's a lot. That's a lot. And we're trying to bring back other things in the programs, direct programs, the bringing the parks online. That takes time. It takes time. We have projects in the pipeline that need to get done. Bishop Park, we're going to hear about Bishop Park here soon. That's one centralized playground. It's phase one. Yes, you heard the money was borrowed four, five years ago. We have the money, we can't give it back. We just can't give it back. It doesn't work that way. We have to build the park. We have to build a new police station. There's a mode in our police station. So we're not wasting taxpayer money. This is money that was already borrowed when I came on the board and projects, a capital improvement plan that was already laid out. We have to complete it. So when you hear someone say, oh, you're doing this project, you're doing that project, that's smart from a business perspective because when I leave here, we should have more capital improvement plans that when the next set of commissioners come in, they can just continue to fulfill that plan. That's business. That's how business operates. We're trying to make the government more efficient and trust me, it's tough. This isn't easy. But the bickering and back and forth, just because you might not have got your way, this is a democratic process. Let's just vote on something, be civil, state our peace, move on. What happens out in someone's personal life, I can't, I can't help you with that. I understand that. I understand your feelings. I understand your emotions. But when we're here, we have to show professionalism to the public. And again, everyone that logged on, everyone that came out and enjoyed their time with us, I appreciate you. We're entertaining, trust me. You know, sometimes you don't know if you're in the Twilight Zone or, you know. We're entertaining. But I will say one thing. These five, when we are out at public events, it's not like this. We actually do get along very well. And sometimes it gets contentious and I think it's about fighting for what we believe you want. And that's fair. But I just ask us, let's tone it down a little bit. Appreciate you. Everybody drive safe and have a good night.
All right. I got like a page and a half, but I'll do it quickly. So, yeah. Commissioner Steele and I, or Vice President Steele and I had a bet on how long this meeting would take and neither of us won. But first, I'd like to congratulate and thank all the participants of the youth police program. This was one of our best-attended programs. And like, that's, that's amazing that we had so many kids that were interested in coming out and learning what police work and what police officers do. And I want to give a kudos to the Police Department as well as Corporal Poe-Crop for continuing to grow that program. I'd like to welcome our new officers who will be going into the Police Academy. Officers Brett, Neil and Barry. So I'd like to welcome them to the township and, you know, wish them good luck in the Police Academy. I want to wish Canine Kicks a happy retirement and welcome Canine Bain to the township. And then there are a couple of things that I missed saying last month in my comments. So I didn't mention Father's Day. So I want to, I hope that all the fathers and father figures had an enjoyable Father's Day. Last month, we also celebrated freedom and we heard about some of the events for Juneteenth. The township hosted as well as participated in a handful of events. This weekend, we'll be celebrating Independence, which inevitably will lead to fireworks. So I just want to remind everyone to be mindful and that you need to be at least 150 feet away from any occupied structure to safely and legally set off fireworks. So please keep that in mind. I hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable time. And the last thing I have is, I don't remember which meeting it was, if it was last month. Commissioner Tuckey requested that I reach out to the Attorney General's Office with regard to an investigation that pertains to the Friendship Fire Company in Bressler. I did. I had done it in October of last year and I got no response. I did it again on, I believe it was June 4th. And this time, I included a representative from the FBI on the email and I got a response. So let me read this real quick. It's very brief, but it's a response. Says, "All the materials regarding the Friendship Fire Company of Bressler and the Bressler Club are currently under review. Our office has an obligation to review everything that has been sent to us." So that's all I got. It's still ongoing. If and when I get any, any information back from the Attorney General's Office, I have no problem sharing that with the public, obviously, as well as the Board of Commissioners. So that's all that I have. I want to say thank you to everyone that stuck with us. This was a lot longer than I thought it would be considering we only had 18 items on the agenda. But that's, it's not the first time that that's happened and I'm sure it won't be the last. I want to thank everyone that takes the time to watch these. And I hope everyone that is here gets home safely. And like I said, happy Fourth of July. I will go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye. All right. The meeting is adjourned at 10 o'clock on the dot.